This conference will now be recorded.
So, open to the public for items not related to the agenda. Anyone have anything not related?
Yes.
Sure. I guess, that thing, is that a thing?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just make sure that the green light is on and try to speak as close to the mic as possible.
This is very exciting. This is my first time seeing someone.
That's why.
Yeah, it's good you figured it out. Thank you.
And folks at home, if you can't hear our speaker, please let me know. It's just out of the camera view our speaker, but I can't adjust it on the fly from here. So please introduce yourself and go ahead.
My name is Andy McElwain. I'm a lawyer with the Dintsey Firm in Burlington. And I'm here on behalf of the University of Vermont. Also attending with me tonight is Lisa Kingsbury. He's Associate Director of Planning for the university. So, I just want to start off by saying, on behalf of the university, thank you for all your hard work, your diligent work, and careful consideration of many important and complicated issues involved in drafting the proposed regulations. The university's Vice President of Finance had previously sent a letter to the Planning Commission, I believe it's dated May 11, outlining a number of questions and concerns that the university has about the scope and effect of these proposed regulations on university land in South Burlington. And actually, well, the university's been actively monitoring and studying the draft amendments that the Planning Commission has issued more recently. And actually, earlier today, I submitted a letter on behalf of the university addressing our review of the proposed regulations. And I'm not sure that anybody here has had an opportunity to see that letter or review it, which is fine. I'll just briefly summarize it. I'm not going to repeat everything that's in the letter, but I think it's important to point out that the letter mostly focuses on questions that have arisen about the scope of the proposed environmental protection standards, and specifically the habitat block designations, and how the Planning Commission views their potential application to university land. The draft proposed EPS and conservation PUD regulations don't really provide much clarification to the issues that are raised in the letter from our perspective. And the wording of those regulations also, in our view, raises pretty significant concerns about their compliance with statutory and constitutional requirements. So we think it's really imperative that those issues be very carefully considered in this process. And these are obviously issues that are extremely important to the university. And we've tried to identify those in the letters that we've sent. We hope that perhaps with additional clarification from the Planning Commission, the concerns that we've raised and outlined in these letters can be alleviated. We're particularly interested in tonight's discussion about the conservation PUDs. Earlier, I'll defer to the finer points that are raised in the letter itself. But if you have any questions about what's in the letter, you have an opportunity to really look at it. We certainly welcome the opportunity for further discussion. And that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If I can just add one quick thing, I had the opportunity to briefly see the letter. I believe that some of the notes that you referenced are elements from comments they made back in May that the commission did give us some guidance to update. Let me verify for the commission whether those changes, there've been a lot of drafts, whether the draft reflects what you had asked us to modify. And I'd be happy to communicate that with you all directly for at least those subjects. Because there may be some of it, from what I see in your letter, that have been addressed.
Thank you very much.
Okay, good. We'll make sure that gets distributed to all commissioners if it hasn't.
Can you bring that just a hair closer to yourself?
Yeah, we'll make sure the letter is distributed to everyone if it already is not. Okay. Anything else from the public? So if you're joining us online, if you're trying to get our attention, you can turn your video on or unmute to signal if you want to add something to the conversation. Okay, next is announcements. Anyone have anything? I don't have any.
Yeah, a week or two weeks ago, a tree equity campaign began. Talking about volunteers working to plant trees throughout various communities that the event is a tree's cooling home, summer lunch. Well, place trees can reduce the effects of stormwater, et cetera, et cetera. And it's sort of a timely thing, because we had this discussion a couple of weeks ago. Corrected, of course, and a few inch ceiling is appropriate. I accept that. But, you know, Jeff Burlington might give some considerations to start thinking of having volunteers to, possibly have a replanting process. Burlington is a very aggressive one. Every year they plant about 153 trees. A part of that, keep them with the pork farm. And they're going to be part of that process for four or five years. It's very impressive. So, very nice. If a tree goes down, maybe several more will go up. Thanks.
Of these many street trees.
I'm sorry?
Of these many street trees.
Not necessarily. Not necessarily maple trees, which probably are not street trees. A variety of trees, but ones that are considered appropriate for, you know, greenhouse gases and.
Actually, somebody.
Monica, can you bring the speaker a little bit closer to you, just so that folks at home can hear?
Thanks. So if I can just follow to that too, just one of the very simple idea that would be great to implement and quickly is, I understand that the Deer Meadows will be going into construction on October 1st. And some people that live in that area were wondering, would it not be okay before the current landscape is adjusted for residents who are interested to go in and transplant some things out that they know are in it, you know? Especially if there's a process where a landscape is going to be altered and cleared, can residents have an opportunity to go in and, you know, transplant something to their own parcel rather than it being removed and no longer there? So just another thought. It's very easy to do. And tree saplings and shrubs, all kinds of things can be just easily moved and shared.
Great. Anything else? Okay, we can move on to four on the agenda, which is the continued review of the draft and announced LDRs, starting with review of the applicability of each PUD type throughout the city. So we have a great map from staff, starting out with applicability by zoning districts. And then, in addition to the table in our packet, staff provided by email, like a nice slideshow, which showed graphically what this might look like. So I thought that could be a good spot to start by showing that map of applicability. That was a fun word, applicability. And I guess since the slideshow starts with the conservation PUD, we could start with that, with where it's applied. And kind of like talk about that holistically. So the application, and then kind of mandatory versus optional in different spots. And then the character of what we expect in the developed portion. Does that make sense?
Can I also just ask the question about timing where you wanted to fit in? But there were, I sent some suggestions for consideration. And I know that there were some other bits of information that came in too. And I believe that some are concerned that that may not be what was on the agenda. So, because it really is discussing some of the characteristics of not just where a conservation PUD, but some characteristics that we should maybe consider about a conservation PUD. Do we address that tonight? What happens if we assign, if we say yes, this area should be a conservation PUD? Do we then later discuss the issues that came in in these memos? I don't want to take anything off track tonight, but I just want to clarify.
I think some of the things that we've heard from, I guess, you had an email on the Board of Housing, it was about applicability and how the different PUDs overlap. And both pieces would all be part of this discussion.
Okay, so they can come, they can include in the agenda tonight. Okay.
Can I ask what the wifi is?
Yes, it's, there's a sheet of paper right up here that has the guest wifi. It's right on the lectern right there.
So Paul brought up this map.
Yeah, so it was not my intent to take too much of the time here, but just that which was in your memo is reflected here in the map. And then for the conservation PUD and the TND, what I did was give you sort of a sense as to the parcels that you're realistically talking about. And Duncan actually pointed out to me that I have a small error in the parcels one. So I will happily adjust that. So, do you want me to just run through them very quickly?
Sure.
Okay.
So these are where they're applicable, but not necessarily, we haven't decided on mandatory or one versus the other at this point.
Correct.
Overdue.
And also, if you're saying that it should be in a district that it isn't, or it shouldn't be, et cetera, this is, just to give you a visual aid. So, right now, based on the draft, this is where the conservation PUD would be allowed. What is not shown in here is that it would also be allowed in any other district that has a PUD if it's 50% of the, if 50% of the parcels is hazard or level one. So that becomes an automatic ability anywhere in this draft where a TND is allowed. I just, complexity, I wasn't able to map that.
And actually on that, so are we envisioning ultimately a map that will exactly show this? Or will it be kind of written out to explain that? Because we won't know all parcels outside of what you have here, right? So a landowner anywhere will have a document to, they'll be using that definition of 50%.
Right.
Anywhere else, right?
Right. I don't think that we could map the 50% in a regulatorily adopted map because ultimately, the size of the wetlands on a property is going to be something that's determined through field verification. So for the most part, we would know, but we wouldn't know 100%. And so I think it would be better to use the description. Also, I just wanted to make sure that Sharon Murray was introduced from Front Porch Planning and Design. She's here to be a resource on any of this. And so if I misstate anything, Sharon, please correct me, okay? So, these are the districts where it would be applicable in the current draft. The place where it would be mandatory would be in the southeast quadrant districts that are shown here. What's not reflected on this map is that the conservation PUD would be able to encompass the natural resource protection part of a parcel in the southeast quadrant. But I was just trying to show the development areas. This second map here is showing, and I will show you my error in a second. Generally speaking, whoops, I think it just takes a second to catch up on the screen. Maybe? There it is. It just takes a second. It's got to go to wherever the servers are in the world. So this is a rough approximation of the parcels that would actually be impacted by this. So this is parcels that have four acres or more roughly of land in a development district within the southeast quadrant that are not essentially built out already. The piece that I missed, and thank you Duncan, is, Sandy, I think you're going to need to turn off your computer audio, otherwise we're going to have an echo. No, it's got to be more than that. If the, there's a little sprocket thing in the top right-hand corner. I believe so. It looks like a little gear. Or a snowflake. And there you should be able to say, turn off computer audio.
I teach points for law.
Probably a matter of everybody's north, northeast of the airport, which would be applicable or eligible for a PUD.
So this is just the conservation PUD. The areas northeast of the airport are either in a commercial industrial district, which currently does not have a PUD type, or it's the residential four district. Then it would be eligible, under the current draft, and you can change any of this, it would be eligible to be a TND. And therefore, if 50% of the property was a hazard of level one, it would be eligible to be a conservation PUD. So let me just point out my error before we get any further. I meant to also include the two large parcels along the lakefront as pink here, as properties that have at least four acres in a development area. So those two green ones in the far left-hand side of the screen, I meant to include as showing candidate properties.
I didn't follow what you just said.
The two properties along the lake, the large ones, should also have a pink highlight on them as properties that would be potentially subject to a conservation PUD, given your draft eligibility here. So then, just quickly advancing to the other two. This shows the same thing, but with the hazards and level one resources under it. We can go back to that if you like. This is showing draft eligibility of the TND, the traditional neighborhood. So that is essentially your lower density, primarily residential zoning districts, as well as some medium density mixed-use districts. And here are parcels with the blue highlight that are the likely candidate. It's not necessarily every single one. This was intended to give a flavor. For example, there's the cemetery associated with St. John Vianney. In theory, there's portions of it that could be buildable. I did not want to jump into a assumption that they're going to sell off part of their cemetery. I also did not assume that, say, rice would go away entirely. So that's just to give you a sense of where these things could apply. What is not in here is the next planned unit development type, the neighborhood commercial, the NCD. The intent with that was that that would apply in your higher density mixed-use areas like Shelburne Road, Williston Road, and that there would be a little bit of crossover in the medium density areas like the intersection of Heinsberg Road and Kennedy Drive, where you've got sort of a little corner of more intensity. Potentially also, depending on where you land, the hill farm and the adjacent properties in your prior drafts, that could be either or. The idea would be, we know that you haven't seen the draft of the NCD. We did not want to push it through and make you have to make sort of a last-second decision on something you haven't frankly seen. And so our recommendation to you would be to advance that which you're comfortable with now. And then the, put the NCD as a work plan item along with TDRs to address, the receiving part of TDRs, to address in the coming months. I guess we felt that A, it was not fair to you to have to vote on something you haven't seen. And B, while they are great tools and important tools, they may not be quite as critical to the core purposes of interim zoning that I think you're all feeling like you need to complete at this moment. So.
And again, on this one, you have that lakeshore circled.
Yeah.
Which is, should not be on this one, that it should.
It could be on this one, and that's a discussion point for this evening, if you'd like.
It could be on either, as you said.
Right. So that's a place where it's, right now would be an option for an applicant to decide which one works out, which one they would prefer to do. In the case of the lakeshore, it gets awfully close to being six of one, half a dozen of the other, because the amount of resources that you would need to exclude if you were a TND gets fairly close to if you were to have a conservation PUD and then put a TND within the remainder. It gets pretty darn close. I haven't run the exact math. But in that parcel, that's one where it kind of becomes almost the same thing. So that's what I had. And then I'm, rest is up for you to have a good dialogue about tonight.
It's probably a hack, but looking at north of the airport. If the Beltor Farm was long in a floodplain largely, as an economy model, would that be an area that we could add a selection PUD, for example?
Currently, Michael, the zoning that is beneath the floodplain is a mixed industrial commercial for most of the Beltor Farm. And so, in theory, if there were not a floodplain, the zoning is similar to that, which is the Ethan Allen Industrial Park. I guess I would say that frankly, given that it's almost entirely in a floodplain, it's not been a priority to figure that out because those floodplain rules are not going to get less strict under this draft, nor is flooding going to become less of a concern in that area in the future. There are one or two parcels that are associated with the Beltor Farm, but they're pretty small. There's one that's just out, just off Country Club Estates Drive, right here. And there's one parcel, I believe, off Commerce Avenue, but it's a very small one.
Okay, so I guess in fact, you know, because this table two then has mandatory PUDs for parcels with more than four acres. And if we're applying only one PUD type to certain areas, that would be the mandatory development type for those areas where there's only one PUD type shown for that size parcel. I guess I just wanted to clarify that. And then, I guess, to kind of piggyback on what I was saying about like the lakeshore area, you know, that's one spot where right now on the map, it's shown with two different PUD types being applicable. So there could be a choice. So I know for a long time we had talked about, there could be a lot of areas where more than one type might be applicable. There could be a choice by the applicant. So it's, so far this mapping right now is not seeing, it's not showing a lot of areas with a choice. So I guess I just wanted to, you know, bring back that piece and make sure that we're seeing on the map what we expected to see. See if there's any changes.
Well, it changes. If we talk about those areas to make sure they give, I mean, just between conservation PUD or TND, that's okay, but the association of a conservation PUD and TND would, would, in a sense, undo what we would leave upon, which would be that a conservation PUD minimum density. TND inside BV, then you're, you've kind of put in this application of the two.
I might be totally wrong and faulty here, but I thought Paul, in the last meeting, addressed that specifically and said that if we put a TND inside the conservation PUD, that essentially the density requirements of the conservation PUD would override.
Okay, then I'm not sure how we thought that.
Well, there's an example in the draft that shows how the density would be addressed. It was originally included as an option for the conservation PUD based on your past discussions about the form that development should take within a conservation PUD.
It was originally discussed.
With respect to Michael's comment on density, Sharon.
I'm sorry, Sharon, are you talking about minimum density?
Yeah, and you're right. And that, if you look at the example in the draft that.
You had two examples.
The second one includes density that's based on both the transfer of development density into the development area and the identity that the conservation or that sort of PUD requires. It includes a combination of both of them.
Yeah, but it's that second piece that would induce overriding minimum density, which is not what we were looking for. I'm certain that it's a big problem for me.
Yeah, I guess, I guess just to follow that, Michael, I thought what we talked about last week, and you know, tonight we were going to decide for what we really wanted to do was the idea that if you had a conservation PUD that had so many acres that the 30% developable was more than four acres, then the applicant could choose to put one of the PUD types, the TND, in the development area or not. Or, so the minimum wouldn't be required. It would be only if they're proposing so many units that you get above, we had said there would maybe be a threshold.
Right. Well, so if it were an option of either choosing the land-based choice within the developable portion or the TND, then an applicant would have a choice. If they chose to be land-based, there's in the draft, no minimum density. And what they can achieve is the, I think last week, we sort of figured out about six units per acre maximum in a buildable area. If they choose to be a TND, then there's a minimum because it brings with it a lot of other design pieces and frankly, in order to, and correct me if I'm wrong, Sharon, but frankly, in order to afford the infrastructure associated with that design and for it to be cost-effective to the developer and to the city, it's going to need to have a certain minimum, as well as from just a design perspective for it to work.
So that's a TND within a conservation PUD.
Correct. Or a TND on its own, wherever that's allowed. So that's currently an option for the developer to pick. One has a minimum, one does not.
And actually, Paul, we could discuss that relation to the allowed TND subdistricts in the SCQ. And right now, it would only be allowed within the village residential.
Right. The commission did say last week, though, that they would like for the possibility of properties that must be a conservation PUD to still, if they've got four acres, be able to be a TND within it.
Yes. Yeah, anywhere. There is kind of a little bit of tension there between putting higher density development and that has a temporary effect of conservative land. So we can understand whether something is silent in that regard. But under the current SCQ, right, and Paul, you know this better than I do, I think that level of density is already allowed within the residential district. If you buy development rights and go through all the other.
Yeah, I mean, you wind up with eight units per acre within the development sub-districts. And then, under the current rules, there's nothing that says that there may not be wetlands, a portion of that. So therefore, your four or eight actually wind up being, in most cases, on a little bit less land. And so you get a net that is probably eligible to be closer to 10 or 12 today.
Yeah, I have an example. In fact, you have a 14-acre piece, simply just. Yeah, I have an example. In fact, you have a fourteen acre piece, seventy percent. That fifty percent is four acres. Then uh, if it's in the SEQ, it's one point two base density, and that would amount to about seventeen. That would be ten to fourteen acres, including reserving another two, I'm rounding up. Including the bonus, about two. So you end up with about nineteen, then you can buy TDRs, etc. So you can get about eight units on those four acres.
Ye- yes, and I think what we talked about last week was um, setting a cap where that would be at probably six, so that it doesn't get too out of line. If somebody wanted to do more than six net per acre, that would be a reason to go over to a TND, which brings more responsibility in terms of design, a greater amount of the civic space. Um, uh, garages need to essentially be served off an alley, et cetera, but in return, you get more density. And what we talked about last week was trying to leave a little bit of separation there, so that somebody doesn't say, oh, I want all the density, but without the design pieces. To make sure that there is a separation that, you know, with reward for additional units, you also get greater responsibility for design.
It remains a choice.
In the current draft, yes. Yep.
Can, can, how, how are we capping that on the conservation? So we're saying that once you get to how many units per acre, that's
What we talked about last week, and this is something that, you know, is, is not set in stone, so you guys can decide it, was that at least in the southeast quadrant district, it appeared to be that if you take the buildable portion, say you're thirty percent, that capping it at about six units an acre within that area is about right, because what that does is um, using Michael's math, if you were to take the one point two units an acre, and let's say your property had very few hazards on it, um, so you redeploy that to the thirty percent, and then you have the inclusionary requirement, the offsets, and then the bonuses and/or ability to buy a little bit of TDRs, that's where you get to about six units an acre. You could go above that, but again, if you go above that, you're getting into the territory of what the purpose of a TND is, and then you're sort of like, well, we're just giving away the things that the TND is rewarding people for. So um, in other districts, if you wanted to apply it, that number might be slightly different. Um, the, the math gets tricky as the density goes up.
Does that, is that a draw to do?
Well, and
A, a little bit, but not, it's mostly just plugging a number in.
That's also where, I mean, because of that amount of density with six units per acre without a TND, that is where I was suggesting the idea of in those cases, if it has to be required, then allowing the landowner to use a range of sixty to seventy percent, because it's going to be the same number of units. It would either be six units per acre in thirty percent, or five units per acre for, in, within forty percent. So it would, it would potentially create less dense building, the same number of units on the parcel, but just, you know, using a little bit more of the land and creating the kind of um, development that the community may be more inclined to support in that area, and still not have to use the TND. So if it's, if it's a parcel where conservation PUD is required, so basically, don't, don't give them up to forty percent of the land to build on rather than thirty percent. It doesn't increase their amount, that, a number of units. Um, it just gives a little more
How would it not increase their amount of units?
Because it's still based on the underlying zone.
So Monica would suggest lowering the cap, instead of being six units per acre net, you drop it down to five. Um, it's, it's, it's up to the commission, the seventy percent is not set in stone. I guess what I would advocate from a planning perspective, and I've, you know, advocated from the very beginning, that um, the more that you can think about compact use of neighborhoods and um, conservation of, of open space, that's a good thing. Um, I personally don't have a concern at six units an acre, you know, that's still what uh, help me with that, seven thousand square foot lots. Those are a little bit smaller than the ninety-five hundred square foot lots we see in the Chamberlain District, but that is not people living on top of one another. Um.
Even five thousand, but at least eight of an acre.
Right.
But, but the idea of the conservation PUD is, is conservation, so we should give the land an option to conserve more than seventy rather than less, because we're conserving less land. And the idea is to conserve as much as possible and put the development into this fine.
Okay, so I think Monica is suggesting changing the seventy percent to thirty, to sixty percent.
If it's required, if it's, if, if we're requiring the conservation, if it's a choice, then make it a conservation driven as possible. But if we are taking a segment of the map and saying, everything here must be, and that's only conservation, that's its only PUD option, to have a little bit of flexibility in there. And I, I I, I think the community um, will, well, I don't know, they um
So the trade-off then, Monica, I think what I heard you saying is, is that if you try to squeeze the density into thirty percent, it may look like a, a tight little pod. Whereas if you did it in forty percent, it might look a little more palatable, I guess, for a lack of
Well, and I think the other reality is that if it's on just the thirty percent and it's required, the easiest path for developers may be to simply, especially if they don't have a minimum, maybe to just build significantly fewer houses that are really big, so they can make their money. And we need to decide, is that what, do we care? Is that a concern to us? And the more space that we give them, and if we provide any, any hope of supporting the concept of the housing for the missing middle, you know, we need to have some flexibility there. If we're cramming them into an area that's so tight, the easiest route will be just to, and that's the whole, that's what we've been talking about, working on.
It seems like there's two competing interests there. There's one, on that thirty percent, you could end up, like I said, with a tight little pod. The other is, since there's no minimum, you could end up with frequent mansions, and
Spread out, and all of these, if you look at all of the boxes,
Yeah.
it's going against potentially the connectivity and so much of what we've been talking about. So I'm not talking about trying to use up more of this sort of land. I mean, yes, going from a sixty to seventy, I'm just saying where we're building, and it doesn't need to be all twelve units per acre, but, you know, if you don't set some kind of parameter that entices the developers, either requires or entices the developer, development to really focus on the missing middle, the easiest path, and we've heard this directly from, we meeting in the municipal housing committee meeting that I attended, there was a developer who made that exact statement. The easiest path will be, like, all right, I'm just going to build my few, few houses. And if that is not a concern to the majority, then we can, okay, but, but I think I'd like to make sure we all really understand that.
Yeah, we have, and, and we also do hear concern about a minimum density from members of the city council and members of public, and I think that that's where we got to having it be the choice for the conservation PUDs, so.
The statistics of the actual files don't bear out the existence of a missing middle. So I can tell you what prices houses are, how many there are, and there is no missing middle. So how do you, what is this all based on?
Can you clarify your path, where, what your information is? I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not understanding um, your comment that there's no missing middle, no missing middle residence or no missing middle housing?
Housing.
So Paul, you're saying essentially that there's a relatively even distribution between low price, middle price, and high price housing in South Huron.
Right. There's seventy-seven hundred homes, forty-seven hundred of those are less than three hundred thousand.
Does that include condos and stuff? Okay, so units.
Is that citywide? Or is it SEQ specific?
Not citywide. The granite list has seventy-seven hundred and twenty-two residential home. Of those homes, seventy-one hundred, seventy-one are listed less than six hundred thousand. Fifty-eight thirty-four are listed less than five hundred. Fifteen-nine twenty-six is listed less than four hundred thousand. Forty-six ninety-six are less than three hundred thousand. So where is the missing middle?
Well, and what, but when you're looking at the SEQ specifically, do you have that breakdown for the SEQ?
No.
Paul? I, I guess, I, I would just, you know, I, I, there, there is, you know, certainly a spread of housing prices in the city. I would say, in, in terms of the classic definition of missing middle, that's referring to housing types that are sort of like, not a single family, not a two-family, and not a thirty-plex, those things in between. And, and I would say that um, we have seen, as is the issue with a lot of communities around the country, not very much of the things that aren't that. We see a lot of single families, a lot of two-families, and a lot of thirty-plexes. We occasionally get some townhomes being built. Um, but, but there's not been a lot in between that's been built in the last um, twenty years. Um, a four-plex. Um, there's Habitat for Humanity built one, but that's, you know, that's a pretty rare thing nowadays, or even a eight-plex. Um, there's a couple at South Village that are, that are twelves, but for the most part, the market has really been driving towards a big building like we're seeing on Farrell Street, or next to it in city center, or single and two-family homes. And so, the missing middle is sort of the, um, the neighborhood scale that isn't a single and two-family home. It's, it's been and this isn't a uniquely South Burlington issue, this is across the country where the market is kind of skewed in those directions.
So you define missing middle as essentially number of units in a, a building. Same, single family.
Yes, with the other pieces of it, of, of why, the why being um, neighborhood scale that isn't a single and two-family, because there's a great role for those forty-plexes, and there's Either.
Wouldn't eight-plex, he, most likely rental?
Y- yes, although I personally owned a townhome in an eight-plex um, until two years ago, so they, they, they do exist.
Well, and, and a cottage court, I mean, it would, it could be a cottage series, it's not necessarily only an eight-plex open. And that's, those are the kind of detailed discussions we could have as well. It's just, it's just, what can we do? Do, are we concerned? Are we concerned if every conservation PUD um, resulted in minimal units with extremely large footprints to make the money, but they, it, they need to be able to make the money back. So are, is that a concern for us? Or not?
Wouldn't it cheapest, you know, I don't know, construction costs, but wouldn't it cheapest for a developer, a flex? Most who
I, I think it's an important question that you're asking, because if we look, you know, let's say in the southeast quadrant today, we've seen some properties like the Rye neighborhood that have made, you know, relatively full use of the, the allowed. We see some other areas like um, Wildflower Lane, or Link Road, or um, uh, trying to think of some other ones, um, some of the ones off Dorset Heights, that have chosen to be well below what they could do. And for whatever reason, they have found that that's the market that they wanted to do was um, X number of homes on, on, you know, on, on a half-acre lot, because that's what they, that's what the market called for. They could have done more, but they chose not to. So I think that's, that's the question that Monica, I think, is, is raising, and it's, it's, it's a good one.
For, for those individuals, those types, both alive, but do they want?
Well, I was thinking of, of, I think it's Goldenrod and Link Road, the more recent neighborhood that's sort of the back half of those, because you're right, the, the other ones are older. I, I'm thinking more in the last ten years.
And then there's around Dupont Drive and that area. Oh, what if you use a seventy, thirty?
Sharon, do you know where that came from? I
Sure, that's actually a pretty common uh, for a conservation PUD, or other types of open space PUDs, so it's a wonder what Monica talked about, going less than that. Typically, uh, anything that involves open space starts at fifty percent. If it's up above seventy percent, it's considered the primary goal is conservation. Below that, fifty to seventy percent, it's more, we're, we're doing more of a suburban or lower density residential development, it still also has some open space attached to it. But the primary purpose is not necessarily preserving a resource or, or a conserving land, the land base. It's more just providing the open space for that development. Um, so, again, the guy who developed this first one is the one who basically said, if it's seventy percent or more, you really are at that point a conservation PUD, where the intention is conserving land over developing the remaining portions. If you go under that, you're still effectively hoping to preserve open space, uh, but you're getting more of a lower density, more suburban form of development at that point, on the remaining portion.
Can I ask a clarifying question on that? So when you said it's normally the seventy, um, is that on land that's identified as natural resource, or is that, like in our case, we're talking about requiring this, whether there's thirty percent natural resources? Is that as common? Or, or in your case, where you think?
Interestingly, often it's elective versus mandatory. But then when it does apply, it, it's that seventy percent, and that again includes what you're, you're looking at in terms of both the hidden hazard and then other policy restricted conservation land.
Right, so if the land itself hits that seventy percent, then it's conservation. But what we're talking about is like requiring that for parcels that may be at forty percent concert, of natural resource.
That's fair, yeah, that's a good point.
So is that, is that an, um, something that has, is a common application?
Well, again, in, in South Burlington's case, we're involving one system of land conservation over another, basically. Um, so we're working within that framework. But you're right, often there, instead of having the southeast quadrant with sub-districts that were defined in relation to TDRs, um, you would end up having a, basically a conservation map that would help direct what land would be conserved, similar to what you've been doing with Forest Block at this point. And uh, it's my understanding that that was done in the past within defining your natural resource protection. So often it's timed as something more like that. But in this case, we decided way back when to look, to tie our PUD types to the underlying zone. Um, so so again, I think, you know, you raise a good point, it's definitely a point of discussion for the planning commission on how you want to kind of maneuver around this.
From your experience, um, just between these two competing kind of divisions, a couple really big houses, a pot of more dense stuff. Um, you know, you've probably seen a lot, you know, what's your experience in terms of how these build out? Is it pretty much all over the board, or do you tend to see them built out more one way than the other, or?
Well, naturally, it is all over the board. In Vermont, it tends to be much more, in, in other communities I've worked on this, and it's much more rural. And they're, you know, there's a lot of farmland, or just forest land, or, you know, large tracts of land. Um, and so the, the remaining portion that's developed, for instance, I think we presented Warren as an example way back then, they have conservation PUDs. Uh, and they've defined two options for their developed area. One is called a hamlet, a crossroads hamlet, which is just a very small, concentrated, you know, what you would find out in village, you know, in the countryside. And then the other one's a farmstead hamlet, which is basically just a cluster of homes that represent pretty much a farmstead, you know, three or four houses. But naturally, you do have examples of conservation PUDs with, and South Village is sort of an example of that, where you have a pretty high-density development, more like a TND than surrounded by conserved land. And so we kind of started by looking at the South Village, and a lot could maybe apply in South Burlington.
Okay. And I guess just, you know, from my perspective between the two, I would rather have something on the denser side, so, you know, affordable, bikeable, walkable, you know, with a higher density than to have, you know, especially your building road, the utilities and all that other stuff, than to have, you know, thirty percent with, you know, two monitored hallways on. That's it, personal perspective.
Paul?
You had previously discussed the possibility of, it doesn't have to be land-based zoning with no minimum, or TND, which is a very intense thing. Sharon's original draft and an option that exists is to set a minimum in the land base. It's not necessarily a very high minimum, but it is something so that you don't get too big house lots. Monica, I think at one point had said, an alternative to that could be also set a minimum, and then in some way let somebody buy out of it to go into the Affordable Housing Program, which, you know, puts housing in a different part of the city, but might be, if your objective is to, is citywide, might be advantageous over just not having a minimum at all. So those are a couple of things. If you're feeling like you're not quite hitting it, I think we could still probably put that in there in the draft. It's not a massive.
The original discussion on the minimum was we were concerned that if somebody wanted to, you know, set aside a couple acres for family or whatever, that, you know, if you set a minimum, then that might exclude somebody's ability to do that. So.
So, yeah. Yeah, one of the other things that we talked about, and this might actually get to the point, you know, I think, Michael, you've been concerned about making somebody build all these houses when they're not ready to. But we talked about at some point, within that thirty percent of land, you know, you wouldn't have to build everything all at once, but you could have just kind of an area that's kind of outlined as a future potential, but you would only build what you're ready to build in the moment, and the rest of it could stay unbuilt possibly forever. But you wouldn't have taken your four homes and spread them out with lots of big lawn. You would have kind of kept them in one area, reserved the future housing area. So I know we had talked about.
It actually is to have a master plan, and I think where that would work if you chose to do that would be, the benefit of the master plan to a property owner is they're guaranteed, they're held under the rules at the time that they adopt for six to possibly ten years. So if you choose to say, I'm only going to build on a little bit of it, you know that you have the right to come in to build on the rest of it in the next ten years. If you choose to do this, like, well, you know, I don't know when I'm going to build it, you may let that master plan expire, and then you would be subject to whatever rules the city has in place at that time, which could be the same, could be more restrictive, could be less restrictive. That's the risk that you're taking. Right, with it, I'm only talking about within the thirty percent.
No, I just want to clarify that.
Yeah. So that's, you know, that's the give and take that's associated with it. You can reserve for future time, and that's intended to allow for people to do it. And you take the risk that if you don't do it by the time your master plan expires, the city has the right to update the rules as you're doing right now.
I'm going to put words in my mouth. I want to make sure you.
I was going to say, something said, I, considering other areas, you should be identified the sentiment of a community in the playground, conservative as much as possible, and seventy percent, as Sharon said, is extended. And seeing reason with me. I don't, I don't believe the fear of building a couple of big houses in a thirty percent is going to be realized as much, not a problem way, but to use random, probably costing a forty-five thousand dollar per acre range. And the other thing is, we have a kind of a double standard. In the southwest quadrant, we go down Spear Street, there's a new McMansion built and there's nothing to stop them. And that's where they can buy the land that looks over the lake to the hyrondics. In other parts of the SEQ, yes, but good use cases, but nothing like that. So I don't think that's a fear that's going to be clear.
Do you have any data on that? Do you have any data on, we were asking, well, about the, you know, is there, is there a way you can estimate the percentage of people that have opted to go the, like, you were giving us the the general sense of people do this or this, but what, I mean, is there any way we can, we can't statistically predict what people will opt to do, right? Is there any?
No, you should have.
Yeah, follow to the math, so I don't know that we can specifically say.
Yeah, we won't, we won't, no, it's true, we won't.
Land ownership is absolutely perfect. We got it.
It would be a choice. So Chris has had his hand up for a while, and we've rambled. But Chris, we did receive your letter as well.
This is a good time, but it's kind of in the same conversation.
Sure.
And Chris, can you introduce yourself, just folks at home can't see you, so if you can just introduce yourself.
Chris, I'm currently, currently have the opportunity to share as the Affordable Housing Committee for South Burlington. Monday, so thank you, I understand, Jessica, I sent this to you, I understand, I'm not just, so I'm not going to breathe into the letter in its entirety. We had a spirited conversation about this very topic. When we heard the feedback from a developer attending a meeting that without minimum densities, they may go to big lots, big, this is square foot, that really sent us some red flags for us. And we'll come up to the conversation about when we build, you know, on a conversation of using conservation, thank you. PUD, and there's that remaining thirty percent. What type of housing do we want to see built in that thirty percent? I appreciate the concerns about the types of density, and there's, we are, it sounds like there's feedback from the commission that we know what we don't want to see, but there's some, but there's some middle ground that we can do. If anybody's concerned for, has questions, learn more about missing middle. We are having a meeting on September twenty-seventh at ten thirty. Room three oh one, CCRPC, presenting the ECO's report that talks about housing inequalities in Chicken County. Welcome, anybody who would be welcome to join that. But really, you know, with the questions that we asked, was should the landlord be given the option to utilize a TND that would build the types of housing that we're looking for? If a conservation PUD was chosen, which we'd encourage, or we had a lively discussion about that, did it need to be required on remaining thirty portion? Also, some of these lots are connected with water sewage. We heard some feedback recently from the city council meeting where one of the farms had talked about they couldn't build or afford those four lot because they weren't connected to the water, so it was a cost. And lastly, you know, we really didn't get down to a specific recommendation. We entered a discussion agreement that, and we want to advise the subject matter experts, this commission, in really what we're looking for. As a result of our motion, we urged the planning commission to maximize housing types, or missing middle and affordable housing types in the application of PUD in city. Seven zero. And I think when you think about inclusion of inclusionary zoning, we dilute the effectiveness by promoting or giving the opportunity for more single-family housing or big lots. We're not maximizing the benefit of that. So it feels like there's a happy medium that can be explored here. And I I do get concerned when I hear from the commission that there's not an acknowledgement of housing practices, or there's doubt about whether the rear is.
Let me ask you a question.
Bernie, then Ted?
Okay, so I have a question, and then kind of a observation. I've heard a lot of talk about the missing middle. I've kind of heard Paul's definition of missing middle. Or the other Paul's kind of definition of missing middle. So I'd be interested in knowing what the Affordable Housing Committee's definition is of the missing middle.
So, think less about incomes, more about building types. So.
From along the lines of what Paul Connor said?
Yes, in the comprehensive plan, we talk about being affordable for all incomes, lifestyles, and stages of life. As we progress through our lives, our housing needs are different. Not everybody goes from an apartment straight to a single-family home. There's folks that are moving up in the housing, and there's folks that are moving back down. They want the island size. From single-family housing to just be a flat. We were doing some active builds over at Twin Oaks. Those are flat, non-known square foot condos. Those are housing type. The market's just not delivering now. That's a beautiful housing type. So there's a way that we can encourage new places that are side by side. Maybe a four-plex, like the Habitat for Humanity parcel that was built on Heimberg. That's a terrific example of a four-plex on a small plot that fit into the picture for the neighborhood. If we can get more of those.
Great, thank you. And then just the, kind of the sense of the commission question. So, you know, I kind of, that I thought that requiring some kind of density minimum so that so that we encourage more housing types in that thirty percent. And I thought, maybe I misunderstood, I kind of thought, oh, but that might be a good idea. I think Monica thinks it's a good idea. So I guess my overall question is.
No.
You don't think, that's fine, that's fine. And that's why I'm asking the question is just as a sense of the commission, are if you feel like having some density minimum in that thirty percent, is it a good idea or not, I guess, just at this point? Because then we can I think maybe direct the discussion a little bit, so.
Yeah, it's a good point, because we've talked about it both ways.
Right, and if, you know, the majority of the commission wants it one way over the other, then I think we should, you know, kind of head in that direction rather than kind of spin our wheels on both. Personal. Ted, did you have a question?
Yeah, Ted, we don't want to make Chris stand up here forever, silly.
Yes, along the lines of what we're discussing. I'm trying to envision, and I think you may have answered it. You're envisioning a rural part of the community. D-plexes, quads, eight-plex. You're not really envisioning single-family homes, because those are not affordable.
Uh, not necessarily. I think it's more nuanced than that. When we look at the southeast quadrant, we understand there's very different parts of the southeast quadrant. As you come up Heimberg, I live above Heimberg on the Voice, and you mentioned that. You know, those are all single-family homes, they're five-hundred thousand plus. When you look at, look at Zillarina and see houses for sale, south front, there's thirty for sale, three on three hundred and fifty. Everything else is above five hundred thousand. Is that the housing type that we want, overall? People think of housing. When you look at the different parcels throughout the city, I think you can find opportunities where maybe these mixed housing types make sense there. Particularly on Heimberg Road, there's one where it's already connected to water, it's close to job centers, and maybe the traffic can support that, but that may not be the case in other parts. There's very rural south front, and then there's wealth in the same neighborhood, but it's not.
Which, where's, where's a very rural?
I'd say they could track them, it's back three road. I've gone on that.
My side of the shoulder, if you were, of course, she can say, we think this will.
Yeah, I just think when we walk up to SEQ as a whole, that's, that's too big of a. Right, let's get a little more.
Well, you know, in addition, do we have a parcel where it is a combination of? Or is it going to be, again, bought down in the former painting of these complexes that really is not consistent with what's out there? That's the one I'm having been in the city for years.
I think when you look at the the housing that goes up in, say, Tac Horns, the Bay Hyrondics stuff, that's not what we're looking for here. Yeah, when you look at, when the TND, the real advantage that we're encouraged about is the variety of housing types. So there might be some single-family, there'll be some multi-unit, and then there'll be some different types of housing that'll, that mix as well.
Thank you, Chris.
Can I just?
Maybe Chris, that's one, right behind, is exactly what we're talking about. Here's a circle with six side-by-side duplexes, so twelve units in a circle with the back, probably of this room. And it's very well done, very close together, they're side by side. But those are truly affordable and very right fast. They're just all some better.
Thank you, Chris, very much.
Just to, just to make sure that we're all talking the same thing here, and this is a great dialogue, but just so you know what's in the current draft. If somebody chooses the land-based version, so moving the density from elsewhere, it's the underlying zoning that dictates the number of units in a building. So today, in the southeast quadrant, single-family, two-family, up to four units in the building, and if it's an affordable building, up to six units. There is nothing beyond that that is allowed today. If you move over to then being a TND, as you talked about the building types, there's small single-family, which is less than twelve hundred square feet, normal single, any size single-family, two one over the other, two next to one another, a three or four-plex that has the appearance of a single-family home, so sort of like the Habitat for Humanity one, has kind of like a feel. And then in the center of a, of a traditional neighborhood, but not sort of on the edges unless it's really up against it, you could do some townhomes. So if it was right up against townhomes, you could match it, but not next to single-family homes. That's, that's the, that's the transitions. The TND would not allow for a twenty-plex or, or anything in that large scale. That's what it's trying to hit as a variety, and that's where you talked in the TND about some basic, not basic, that you have to have at least three different types to get that spread. In the underlying zoning, we're proposing that you at least keep the current standard of the southeast quadrant, which says that if you choose to do the land-based one, that a mix of housing types or housing styles is required, which is what you do today. I would like to see it bolstered frankly a little bit over what's in there now. It's hard for the DRB to just sort of, what is a mix? But, but that's, that's where you're at. So the draft doesn't have the extreme versions that would be in there. There won't be a thirty-plex built along Cheese Factory Road or anything like that.
So before I move on, can we just can confirm that's what we want to go with, with that building styles and sizes and variety?
Actually, I did have a question that has, sorry. No, Paul, you answered my question. I guess really what it came down to is, for the conservation PUD, if somebody is doing a building type, we didn't really, it's not building type, it's building style. I guess what, the minimum they could do, and what are their choices in buildings, and how do, what?
In the conservation PUD, if you're not doing the TND, you're just doing, it would revert to the underlying zoning. So in the southeast quadrant, that's single-family, two-family, three-plex, four-plex.
And they get to choose.
They get to choose. That said, in the draft subdivision rules that would apply across the board in a subdivision and in a conservation PUD, we're proposing that you at least keep the language that's in the current SEQ, which is, it used to say a mix of housing types. Commission changed it a few years ago to a mix of housing styles. I think we, you know, if you're seeking our professional opinion, we would say types would be a stronger term to reflect single versus two versus three versus styles, which could mean, you know, international style versus a raised ranch or a cape.
Configuration would be a better term to use.
Yeah.
So, and I, what I was also suggesting was, um, if we did have some kind of minimum to Bernie's question that we will all answer, it also may be something like, and I don't know how people feel about this, but also, um, restricting, um, the largest type of house. So you can have a single family, but let it be within the smaller footprint so that there is room for other or there's room for more. So if we can restrict the largest, you know, maybe in a conservation PUD, um, that, that's restricted. It's, it was just a thought, so.
And just a request at home that the folks who are sitting furthest back from the mic, when you do speak, if you can speak a little bit closer in, that would be appreciated.
I can repeat that, that perhaps configuration would be a better term than.
Well.
Um, because in terms of whether it's single duplex, two duplex.
But, so my only question on that would be, is there a standard industry terminology?
Type is pretty standard. It comes out of the Urban Code rule. And basically what we're doing is creating a hierarchy, sort of a form-based code, regulating by building or housing type versus just single, two-family, or multiple.
So it sounds like type is the industry standard word that we would use if we want that different thing.
And as Paul said, we had that discussion in the past too, between types and styles. And now it's just styles and references Cape Cod Ranch and, you know, actually architectural style versus.
Right, and the result of that is that you've seen a little bit more variety in architecture, but less variety in configuration in the last five years.
So I would just say, you're kind of, I'm getting an impression you're zoning in line. What we have now is an option of no minimum density or TND. There is sort of a middle path there, and I think Monica's, it's touched on this, where we could do the, the no-density version, but have a minimum density and not necessarily have a full-blown TND requirement.
And it could be relatively low also. It doesn't have to be, I mean, if, if currently you're at zero, you could say minimum of three units an acre or two units an acre if you wanted. It, it's, it's, it's up to you. There's no, there's no, um.
The rule of thumb of what's current in the southeast quadrant is four units per acre, I think. And that is sort of the rule of thumb statewide for walkable density of development. Uh, within that, we could define housing types specifically that, as you suggested. You know, leave out maybe townhouses in that context, but have, and go duplexes, flats, high, high court types of housing that might fit within that, that density.
Right, and then just, um, to bring back to where that carve-out that you talked about at the last meeting came in, that was the genesis of saying, if somebody, let's say you decided to do four units an acre minimum, two minutes, two units an acre minimum. The idea with the carve-out originally, when you talked about it, was, um, setting that aside. If somebody one time wanted to cut off a two-acre piece of their property and not have to meet all those rules because they just wanted to do that, that could be something, we're not necessarily advocating it for, but you'd heard some feedback on that to, you know, say one time you could do that, but you don't want to do it over and over, and then, you know, then you've achieved the opposite of what you're intending, so.
How would we manage that right time? Drop it in such a way that the next owner couldn't do it, then it's, it's, it runs with the land?
So we, we currently have something a little bit like that, Michael, in our NRP district. Um, what it says in the, in the current NRP is to say that you can subdivide at one time if the property was in existence in its current form as of May thirteenth, nineteen ninety-two. So it would be the same thing here. You would say you could, you know, carve off one parcel of no more than X, um, if the parcel was in existence in its present form as of X date, twenty twenty-one. That would be a way to do it. I'm not saying that, not advocating or disadvocating for it, just saying that's a tool in your toolbox.
And, and then we could say for the thirty percent, thirty percent minus the carve-out, that we want a minimum density of two or four units of, a mix of these types.
So I want to link, um, to, you know, on the minimum density.
Okay, let's separate those issues. So, um, I, so staff recommends, so this is under three here, a diversity of housing types um, in a subdivision above a minimum threshold of four lots. Their general agreement in having.
Where are you, Jessica?
I'm just referring what Paul just said like two minutes ago. It is technically in the memo, but just the conversation we were just having about requiring a diversity of housing types. I mean, I think we've talked about this many, many, many meetings, but just to confirm, I'm in favor. Um, everything, a lot of favor. So I think in general, the commission would want to require a diversity of housing types, which is, you know, essentially what our purpose is. So that's the one piece, um.
Yeah, there is a minimum density.
The other one is, now, this is just an informational, this is not a, for most.
Yeah, I think, um, yeah, we can, well, I mean, we need to give some kind of feedback, but first we can have like maybe an informal.
Because we haven't heard from Sandy either, and I don't know if there's anyone else, so we probably just.
Yeah, Sandy, put your hand up. I'm sorry, Sandy has set her hand up for about fifteen minutes.
I'm Sandy Dooley.
And Sandy, can you speak closely to the mic just so everybody can hear you? Is it on, is the green light on?
Oh, no, okay. Oh, no. Sandy Dooley, I live in, uh, on East Terrac. I'm a vice chair of the Housing, Affordable Housing Committee. I'm gonna get a little general and then I'll turn on it really fast. I just wanted to go back to the vision of the plan. The very first thing is affordable and community strong. And I don't think what was intended was affordable in all parts of the city but the southeast quadrant. I don't think that was meant, and I don't think if it did mean that, it would, it wouldn't match up with community strong. Just wanted to say that. So I encourage you to approach this holistically a little bit. I know, uh, maybe a major part of this conservation, natural resources. But I think, you know, you really need to think about it consequently. Um, I just, I want to, I think two things that people are unhappy with in the southeast quadrant. One is that there's not enough protection of natural resources, but I'm, I'm happy with how it's developed in terms of the housing, well, in passing, sustain neighborhood. And that's what I think, um, you ought to also be thinking about. There are two things that people are unhappy with about, like more protection of natural resources. One, more neighborhood life, you know, and, you know, within South Village and Ride. Um, I think we really don't have it. Um, I also would say, in response to what Sharon said, on what basis are small neighborhoods that are designed consistent with the TND model incompatible with being near the conserva, you know, an area where you're conserving, conserving natural resources? I don't, you know, maybe, maybe there's five. Um, the last thing I want to say, it sort of goes to my email. It's really pretty, um, dramatic that you're talking about mandatory conservation PUDs in the southeast quadrant as a matter of policy. Um, especially when you're talking about seventy percent. So I don't, I'm, I'm really arguing, I'm encouraging you to think more positively about the, um, minimum density. Because it may sound like a restriction, but it really is the way to counterbalance the restriction you've put on the other southeast quadrant, or whatever, whatever. Because if, if you don't give some protection to the property, the property, they are at the mercy and I know you don't like to think about, um, in particular cases, but there was, um, an application this, and I keep thinking about that, that maybe a mandatory conservation PUD. If there is not a minimum density, I don't see any way, given the neighborhood opportunity. Won't be. You really need to counterbalance what you're doing in terms of requiring conservation with some protection and how their options for developing the thirty percent. That's it. Thanks, Sandy. Um, okay, so there were a couple of different things, and I think they're all interrelated, and it'd be nice to get some feedback. Um, so I think maybe in the form of straw polls, generally get feed or feelings, so. Um, and I think maybe they're separate issues. So one is the carve-out. So, you know, within a conservation PUD, you can, and this is written in the draft, we've talked about it a couple of times. We, we said we would circle back to, so the idea is that you could set aside that piece of land and do what you're going to do with it separate, without having to do the whole rest of the PUDs. That's one piece. And then the other piece is the minimum, requiring some kind of minimum density in the conservation PUD, I guess. So this is what my straw poll, so I, who would be in favor of a minimum density? Let's just say four units an acre in a conservation PUD, but you don't need to build it all at once. You could build just a very small amount, but just set aside the rest. You know, to be able to show on a master plan, it could be done in the future. So there's no minimum that they have to build in the moment, but there's a minimum that would be set aside for a future.
That's basically the same, that's setting the minimum, but it's now more of a, next year, still a minimum.
Yeah, so that's, that's my straw poll. Who would be in favor of that?
Just can we go up to the call-up? The, the call-up would be one time. And what are the limitations on the call-up?
Can you do them separately?
Well, I need to understand this as well.
You described the carve-out.
Okay.
Um, if you chose to do a carve-out, then what would happen is that, um, a X amount of land, say two acres, one acre, whatever number you choose, would be able to be removed from the property without triggering the need for a master plan, without triggering the need for the conservation PUD and all of that work. So you would not have to design the rest of the property.
Like a little subdivision.
It would, right, it's essentially allowing a one-time, what we would call minor subdivision of X to, of, up to X amount of land that is not triggering all of the other, um, standards of, of the land development regulations.
X amount of land and X, in X amount of poss. So, then it could maximum four poss, or whatever the number is. How are we gonna limit this?
Um, if you were to do it, we would recommend that you keep the, the, the size pretty small. Um, because, you know, a lot of properties in southeast quadrant are not that big. So if you were to take, say, up to ten acres, then you're, right, right. I'm just giving, if it's a high number, a lot of properties are going to do the carve-out. If the purpose is to allow for somebody who's got a kid to one time do this without having to plan out the rest of the property, then, you know, s- some relatively known low number that represents a house would be our recommendation, but.
One or two acre, one time carve-out.
And it would use the underlying zoning, so if they took two acres, they could have the house and the accessory dwelling anyway, and, and maybe a third.
Yeah, I mean, this is where it starts to get kind of tricky, to be honest, is so, you know, what, if you had an acre, what's the underlying, what's the underlying zoning? Can you bring TDRs into that, et cetera, et cetera? So I guess I'd say, you know, help us understand exactly what you want to do with that, because we will get questions pretty quickly.
So I have, I want to call that my huge property, three one acre lots for my kids. Is that what, that the kind of thing we're envisioning?
I think it was your idea, so wasn't it?
Yeah, no, I wanted, that, that was my idea to not have a minimum so that somebody could do that kind of thing.
Right, if there was no minimum, then this is somewhat of a moot point. Right, Sharon? If there's no minimum, that this is somewhat of a moot point, right? I mean, you'd still have to go through your master plan, you'd still have to do your conservation PUD, but you could choose to make three lots out of it, I guess.
If there's no minimum, the car lot is required.
Right, you'd, the difference would be that if you wanted to create those three lots and there, and there was no carve-out and no minimum, you would have to do your conservation PUD, you'd have to set aside the seventy percent, et cetera, et cetera. The carve-out skips all of that. That's the difference.
Well, the carve-out is just, I'm going to set aside two acres. I'm going to carve out two acres, I'm going to do with it whatever the underlying zoning says I can do with it. And that two acres has been set aside. So if you have a hundred acres, you've set aside one-time deal, two acres, develop for the underlying zoning. You have ninety-eight acres left. And then of that, you're going to have, if you do a conservation PUD, thirty percent of that ninety-eight is going to be what you're going to develop on. And you're going to have the master plan on, and that's what you're going to have. Minimum density question that asked us the answer as part of the straw poll. Correct?
Yes.
In my case, I don't want to do anything with ninety-eight acres. I want to conserve them.
You can, you can do this. I mean, if somebody wanted to conserve all ninety-eight acres.
They can do that today with the, you know, conservation.
Right, and, and that's where, when Sharon has used the language minimum seventy percent, there's certainly nothing precluding somebody from saying, I'd like eighty-five percent, ninety-five percent to be set aside. That, that's a minimum.
Or they can just, sorry, they can just continue owning it and doing nothing with it themselves and then deciding to sell it in fifty years or ten years, and let the next owner.
Or they can sell it as a conservation piece of property.
Right, whatever that.
There's nothing precluding anybody from doing any of that. Our, our only thing is that if it's seventy percent minimum, if they choose to develop it, then they have thirty percent that they can work with. And what we're talking about is, do we want to have minimums on that thirty percent?
Okay.
Right?
Yes, that is the question. Do you have any questions before we?
Well, the corollary is, do we have maximums? And you were talking about, I mean, they are related. You know, it might be acceptable to some of us that, um, a minimum is two acres, two units per acre. Um, if the maximum is six units per acre, for example.
Right.
And I, and I think that is the draft right now, that if you choose the, 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 as we talked about last week, if you choose, talking about the southeast quadrant, if you choose the option that is, um, the, the transfer, uh, the, the, the underlying zoning, it, you would get a maximum of six units per acre in the buildable area. If you chose the TND option, wherever you choose to allow that, that's set by building type.
Um, well, Ted and then Roseanne?
There's, um, these are obviously related because if I, you know, go for the carve-out, and then we turn around and do a minimum, I would go along with that. Because in my mind, I have three daughters, I have five acres. And it would let, and if I could do, for each of them, I'd be ready, but if I put them into a triplex in order to do this, what do you say? So, you know, yeah, there's, there's not a lot of situations like that, but there are consequences throughout the southeast quadrant. My neighbors, they're exactly the same situation. So, carve-out, the carve-out is really family-related. Maybe I'm misunderstanding what it is, but.
But, well, I think it's the reverse, though. If, if you have a carve-out.
Monica, can you speak closer to the mic?
Yeah, sorry, so just, if you have a, the carve-out actually would come first, that if, if, if we supported the notion of, of implementing a minimum into the conservation PUDs, you would have that opportunity to say, before I do that on my full five acres, I'm going to take a carve-out for my family. And then the remainder of it would be the conservation PUD, and on the buildable portion of the remainder is where the minimum would, yeah, so it's the reverse.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Okay.
It seemed like you had that.
Yeah. And, and the minimum would be, um, at least a set aside of the land wouldn't need to be built at the moment.
You'd, you'd have to demonstrate that it can be achieved. If you choose to put it in the later phase and then don't build it, that's, that's what you're, that's what you'd be doing.
Okay, um, Roseanne? And then Paul, you know?
And then Paul, you know?
Jessica, did you call me? I didn't hear.
Thank you, Roseanne, yes.
Oh, okay, I'm trying to be respectful, like, because I'm not too, I don't want to interrupt your conversation. And and I sort of stayed away from this process, allowing the commissioners to, you know, discuss this. And I I'm not going to get into the nitty gritty of what you're discussing now. And thank you so much for spending the kind of time you are on this. But I I just want to sort of give it some general context for how I'm approaching this and how I know many people are approaching this. And it is in the context of climate change. We don't have that many natural resources left. But there, they will be able to help us mitigate the impacts of climate change. There are other priorities, of course. But this is an overarching survival kind of issue. And there's not environmental resources everywhere. They're only in certain parts of our city. And I'm urging the commissioners to put the climate first and protect the natural resources wherever they are in our city, whether in the Southeast quadrant or outside of Southeast quadrant. They are so incredibly vital for us to be able to get through the worst effects of what the climate change is going to do to us. So as you talk about conservation PUDs, the default should conserve as much as possible. There are other places to build houses in the city. Please, please don't build them on the natural resource lands because they're essential to our survival. So I'm just trying to hope you'll you'll consider the climate crisis as you make your decisions about what to do with the lands that contain the natural resources. Uh, thank you.
Pauline?
Yeah, I'm just starting to say that the talking about the conservation PUD with seventy thirty, what in the conservation PUD, that's essentially the the vehicle or the tool we're going to use to do the conservation. And so, I mean, one of the, what, what's the article?
Article twelve. Lot. Look at the map.
Yeah, I think article twelve and, you know, we've, we've made the recommendation to the city council to take a look, closer look at the open space report as well. And now I know there's been a lot of discussion about the use of conservation funds for purchasing land as well. So this is a tool that we are using, but, you know, I think it's not the only tool.
Okay, well, there really was no question. Um, my issue is that I are looking for ways to, you know, reduce the effectiveness of the conservation with minimums or with carve outs. If this is what we've got, then this is what we've been working on for the past year. All of it, working and commission. And the state should have given, you know, reducing the effectiveness of it.
Can I just ask you a theory on how how does a, I'd like to understand your 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 thought process. How is, of course, we're still working with the seventy thirty, but we implemented a minimum in the thirty. How is that? How is that weakening the seventy percent that's being conserved? How how is the seventy percent being conserved weakened? If there is a reasonable minimum then versus large footprint, trophy homes? What where's, how does, what's the difference to the seventy percent that we either, in either case, are conserving?
Well, if someone is required to do the conservation PUD, shouldn't we allow them to do what they want to do with it?
Well, yeah, and I think that that's what we're we're talking about. And we have individual views. I guess we, are there any other questions about how it works? Or, and I can personally, to your point, what we actually sold this project to the municipal and the public up until just a few months ago. As all of these PUDs, all the PUDs had a minimum density until just very recently. And I actually don't know how the draft changed. But we had a minimum density. And every time we talked to the city council about these PUDs was that I knew that we were going to have land development. It was going to be used very efficiently because we're going to have these minimums. And it meant that we weren't just going to be sprawling out all over the place. You know, if we were going to be giving up a land and it's no longer going to be a conservation land, we're going to use it really well. And we're going to have this very good PUD. It's going to have good standards and it's going to have efficiency in a neighborhood feel. And for years of this project, that was how we sold it to the public and to the city council. And I guess I'm not totally sure when the minimum went away. Kind of lost track of how that got changed and drafted. But I guess the conversation I'm having right now is, should that minimum still be in place? Knowing that someone wouldn't have to build it all, but that it would be able to be built at some point so that we're not just, you know, giving away a land by having it developed inefficiently. So that's that's the question. I guess that's, you know. Yeah.
So can we finish the poll?
Yeah, so I mean, I'd love to have the poll.
Well, no, just, I think it went away in response to a feedback that we got from the public. Maybe to some extent from some of us. And we decided that it was only in the conservation PUD that we would the minimum to give the land owner something to do, a freedom of movement, if you like. Not to have to build at that time four units per acre. Did you mean, I mean, four units in four acres or three acres, whatever the thirty percent was. And that was the the foundation. And I figured it was the right decision. Good plan on this fact. It's, no one else, not in any of the other PUDs, did we agree to that, only in the conservation PUD. And I think we should think of what we decided back when you.
Okay, well, I guess we'll have the straw polls. So my straw polls, who is in favor of including the minimum to be in conservation PUD? In the thirty percent?
Some form of minimum.
Some form of minimum, doesn't need to be four units per acre. We can talk about.
That's important, I think. What what are we talking about?
I said four units in it.
You said four.
Right, in the buildable portion, so it'd be like quarter acre lot.
Could be less, could be smaller lot.
Or it could be smaller lot, you're right. Okay.
Seventy small.
Uh, okay, so who's in favor of the minimum?
Want to make that into a motion? A lot of them straw polls that has some.
Sure. I move that we include the, re-include the minimum density of four units per acre for the conservation PUD. One second.
Your original didn't specify, didn't specify Paul.
Ted asked me to specify a number.
Yeah, I'll make a friendly amendment to your motion.
Okay.
Make it.
And we start with the first?
So procedurally, if you just to sort of Robert's rules on this, because I I know everybody wants to get their vote correctly, I would suggest the motion and the second on the four. Rather than a friendly amendment, make a motion to amend it to two. Then if that's second, you vote on changing the four to two. And if that passes, then you would vote on it, the whole thing is a two. Does that make sense? That way, everybody gets gets their voice heard exactly the way that they want it to be heard.
And that's because I did second it, so can we talk about it now first or?
Um, yes, although Paul has made a, I'm sorry, Michael has made a motion to change that.
Now, I see, I thought it happened after.
It can happen at any time. So, Michael, do you want to move to amend the motion to set the minimum at two?
Yes, I would move to amend the motion. Set the minimum to two units per acre rather than four. As the part of the original motion.
So is there a second to that?
One second.
Okay, so now you can have a discussion on that piece of it.
On the two versus the four?
Two versus four. And then you'll vote on that. And then depending on that, you will decide on the original motion of the minimum.
So my, I guess my point is, doesn't matter if it's the two or the four, though. So I guess I wait. But my point is, just as a reminder, that part of the the original motion does not require that those those units all be built immediately. That the landowner can choose. They they do have to have a master plan, but they do not have to build all acres immediately. In either case, whether it's the two or the four.
Yes.
Or the mark.
Discussion on the motion?
To Monica's point, the master plan, I mean, if if the master plan isn't enacted in a certain, it's a max.
So it the the master plan has a valid period of six to 10 years. After that time, somebody would have to come in to renew it under the rules in effect at the time of the renewal. And so if the rules don't change at all, they would easily get a reapproval. If 10 years from now or six years from now, you have substantially changed the rules. It's basically a contract where they're putting the effort to master plan today. And in return, the city is saying, we're going to give you certainty for this period of time.
I'm, the, I guess the reason I said four, not that I'm like four, but the reason I said four was actually because Sharon has actually referenced four units per acre a few times as being kind of a key number for having a walkable neighborhood. And I know that that's something that we've talked about a lot. So, like I said, I'm not, I'm not set on the four, but that was kind of the reason behind why I picked that number.
The exact change and day would like.
Yeah. So I don't know that I'm necessarily set on the four versus the two either, other than what what's good practice, I guess.
And I I think what you will see is, so so people can choose to build higher. If you're setting the minimum, there's there's two effects of it. It will, one, if you set it four, then you will know that it's going to be a walkable environment. The, to to a point that that Sandy Dooley made, it also creates a legal floor so that somebody coming in knows that that's what they can have. Two assures that you don't get really large, you know, homes on on a single lot. And, yeah, we can, we can, yeah, I think I'll just leave it at that. There's more things that I can say, but it'll just muddle it further, so.
Sharon, have any input? Like, I just don't have.
I mean, the underlying density in the SEQ is one point two acres, so two isn't a big stretch. So, I mean, it might be helpful to run some numbers, but hard to do tonight. Again, four is just typically, you know, with the state and everybody who's being pushed as walkable and and more compact and more of a neighborhood than just a residential development or a scattering. So it's more of a form and pattern of development you're looking at versus number of units.
Would it be fair to characterize it as sort of the crossing point between a neighborhood versus something that's a little bit more? Well, I guess, yeah, neighborhood, I guess. That's, it's the crossing point where it'll start to feel like you're walking in a neighborhood street.
Leading us back to your example of just having, you know, a few duplexes around the circle. That might be all it is. But it it has more of a character of a neighborhood than just a one room, like, two houses.
Well, then for two, I'm going, what's the four?
No. Um, okay, any other discussion on the motion?
So we're vote, we're voting on two, and then if that, we're done?
If you're, so you're voting on changing the four to a two. If it fails, then you will then be voting on the original four minimum. If it passes, then you would then be voting on a minimum of two.
Well, we can hear from Chris. While we prepare our votes.
No, I think it's a great conversation. Thank you for having the four versus two. Just when I hear two units per acre, the first thing that pops up in my mind is, you know, I live in a house on a half acre. And is that the kind of neighborhood that we're looking for? That's not very, and it's, you know, it's spread out. Whereas if you had the four. That 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 more compactness and if there's, all right, so I'm not just duplexes or something. That's, that's paper, you're really, you know, what what is the resulting housing type that will deliver with a minimal two? And that's sort of the housing. Are we restricting certain incomes from being from the neighborhood? And is it really likely that developer could go higher? Maybe they just stick with the two, we get a low density neighborhood. So just what can they do?
And clarify my question, my favorite one, to Chris's point, when we say two units, two ha, two units per acre in this motion, we would not expect within that thirty percent for them to be all half acre lots because in fact, they're bringing in the two acres per minimum, two, um, two units per acre is going to be of the density of the entire lot.
No, it's, this is of the buildable area.
So would not exceed two units per acre of the buildable.
No, it's not, this is a minimum.
Minimum, I.
So it's not exceeding. So let let me, let me use real numbers here. You have a 10 acre lot and thirty percent of it is three acres, right? If you set a minimum of two units an acre, what you're saying is the minimum is to build six dwelling units on those three acres. The maximum is, as previously discussed, six units per, uh, six units per acre through that cap that we set up. So six times three is eighteen.
Okay, I wanted to make sure.
In in this scenario. And if it was four units an acre, then it's four times the three is 12 is your minimum.
What I want to make sure of is that it wasn't, to your example, I don't even know what you said, but let's say it's 10 acres. And so it would go down to the three for the buildable. And if in fact, there's only, within this other portion, there's only, you know, 10% that are hazards, they would technically still have the ability to use the density from.
Well, that's your maximum.
That's the maximum.
So the min, right, so that's separating out the minimum from the maximum.
Right.
And depending on, you know, what you do with you, these two votes, then we can talk about how that minimum is achieved with TDRs in Southeast quadrant. That's a whole other thing, but let's not.
Understanding what we were talking about. So it's that minimum of a two per acre, okay.
Right, so that's what.
Now we're voting on.
Whether to change the four proposed minimum to a two. You you will still have to vote on the overall and to have anything at all. This is just the motion to say, make the proposed action be two instead of four minimum. And I think you might have a comment from the public here.
Um, Andrew, you want to go ahead?
Yeah. I mean, look, I I I'm more interested in the making sure we have the seventy percent than what goes on the thirty, honestly. But I'm just, I'm I'm curious, what, Paul, have we done any research, legal research into the constitutionality of requiring a landowner, say, that doesn't have sewer service or water service to build more houses than they otherwise might want to? So I, I mean, is there other examples of that? Is that legal?
So Sharon, I don't know if you want to take that question. I guess I would say, um, first and foremost, if the land is not physically capable of of doing it, there's, there's always a carve out in that instance, correct, Sharon? So if if it's physically not possible, which is not the same thing as desire, then that is a carve out. Broadly speaking, do you want to speak, you know, just briefly to the legality of minimums?
Minimum density.
Can you speak closer to the mic?
Sorry, yeah, a minimum density requirement is pretty common around the country. It isn't, hasn't been applied to. It isn't, hasn't been applied so much in the law today. So it is sort of a new concept here. For the county.
Can you get even closer and make sure your green light is on?
Or shut.
It's on, yeah.
You gotta be about three inches.
But again, a lot of the time it's adopted, as some folks have noted here tonight, largely to protect the interests of the development community by setting a minimum or base density that they're guaranteed to have financially if they invest in the property. And it's also been adapted over the years to, again, in relation to trying to create more concentrated walkable community. So you do find minimum densities elsewhere in the country. You could run through a random little review and see what, okay, but it's, it is a common process.
I have a follow up, I mean, a clarifying, because I think Andrew brings up a very good point. And to be clear, we would never be forcing anyone, if there was a four unit base, we would never, or to, we would never be forcing them to build that on a timeline. That's just their.
They would have to design a project.
Yes.
That can, that effectively shows how that's built. And so let's say they decide to only build three homes.
Yes.
Those three homes would. Right, but it would need to only take up the space showing that the remainder can be built.
That's right, so we would never force anyone to build out an entire, they can choose to build one of the homes. The question is of what's.
Within reason, right? Like the one would not be able to be a mile down the road of a, of a driveway that is, you know, without all, that's going to become a public road that we have to maintain, which by the way, the town that I grew up in literally has a two mile road that is publicly owned, serving one house because they didn't build the rest of it. So there's other pieces of it that would make sure that the phasing has to be logical too.
Right.
So it's not even.
I'm sorry, just a thought, I mean, if, if we're providing this huge loophole that actually never has to be built, why require minimum in the first place? It's just not really making sense to me.
Andrew, it's, it's a matter of design of how the, of how the property is laid out, but that's for commissioners to discuss.
Yeah, Sharon, the intention, I mean, the, the minimum is designed to protect the developer. But what about the landowner, who's not a developer? He doesn't have to be stuck with, with, with being forced to build four units per acre, or two units per acre as a minimum. He might not want to do anything, but.
Okay.
That's why the carve out would be.
Yeah, so this, this is. This is why I think we should just vote, because no matter what people say, probably against it, other people might be for it. So I mean, it's like an hour, but seven, just. So we're voting first on to change it to a two, two units.
We're voting to change four to two.
We're writing to set a minimum of two. But does, are we supposed to be hearing from?
I don't know. Daniel, are you trying to give public comment right now?
Yeah, I was, I was, I, I, I'm just trying to jump in in between Andrew and when you were about to start back up. I could be really quick, I, I, I posted my question in the chat, but a couple of people, including Paul, advised me that the commission's not following the chat, so I'll just read my chat post, it's pretty short. Do the surrounding municipalities, for example, Shelburne, Charlot, Colchester, Williston, have minimum density requirements? If not, then imposing minimum density requirements in South Burlington could have unintended consequences. Specifically, instead of inspiring more developed density, such requirements could cause developers to invest in development in municipalities which don't require minimum density, meet market demand for lower density housing. In other words, mandating minimum density could interfere with consumer preferences for lower density.
Okay, so all in favor of moving to two acres? Great. Okay, so I guess the original motion stands of a minimum density of four acres.
Four units per acre.
Four units per acre, own net density within the buildable area. Okay, all in favor of the minimum density of four? Okay. So I guess we're back to that. Yes, so split votes, so, so that'll be in the draft, it'll be good to get public comment here, when the city council says as well.
Jessica, you had said that as a follow up, you also wanted to talk about carve out as the second piece of that.
So the second piece of that is the carve out. This was in the draft that we've seen that people applied it as, you know, something they want to talk about, so.
So it's in the current draft as written as carve out?
Yes.
But we didn't put any parameters on it, did we? In terms of size of parcel and.
Language in there, but they're not specific. Unfortunately, it's written in the draft that we denied.
Oh, I'm, I'm still confused a little bit, so in the current draft that we have, is there a carve out?
Yes.
And does it set a minimum or whatever acreage for that?
Well, I don't believe it did.
I don't remember.
The current draft says that for Southeast Quadrant parcels in existence as the, as of the date of the regulations, that are 10 acres or more in size, one carve out and development of not more than four acres under the applicable subdivision and zoning may be allowed. And I think that the four acres was, because that's the threshold for a P U D. There is not magic to that number, that was, you, Commissioner Nastas to give you something to work from, and there's something to work from.
But isn't the infill P U D at two acres? No? Now we have an infill P U D since we've talked about this carve out.
Yes, but four is the mandatory size for a P, if you're at least, if you're four acres, you must be. I'm just saying where we, where the, where the genesis of the number comes from, I'm not arguing for or against it.
Right, I, I'm just trying to, do you know how.
Oh, to maybe or maybe not move things along. I'll make a motion to retain the language that's currently written.
I have a question about 10 acres, because 10 acres is quite a lot in the context of, it's not, not a lot of big lots like that, so would it be wise to reduce that for the common to five acres?
I think it's at four acres right now.
What Michael's saying is that you're only eligible to carve out four acres if you have 10 to begin with.
I thought you were saying to reduce four acres to some smaller amount that somebody.
Suggesting reducing the, that you need to add acres to some smaller number, maybe six.
Okay, so Bernie has a motion on the table to just retain that language. I'm not hearing a second.
That's fine.
Okay. Does someone else have like a?
Could we reduce the four acres to two acres?
Make, make a motion that you would, right, so there isn't, there's no second on that. So if you'd like to make an alternate motion on something, then make a motion and we can get it on the table.
I would make a motion that we retain the language in the current draft, with the exception of the acreage reducing four acres down to two acres.
I'll second that.
Okay, any?
For maintaining the 10?
Yes.
So again, just to be clear, for a parcel that existed as of the date of the adoption of the regulations, that is at least 10 acres in size, and this can be in any district within the Southeast Quadrant, um, that you're proposing, your motion is to allow carve out of not more than two acres that would not be subject essentially to the master plan and the other things. It would then be treated as its own parcel that is, you know, doesn't, doesn't do a P U D and doesn't do a master plan.
And Monica's second.
Can I share a second, Michael?
When we get into this.
We're discussing.
I think two acres is, is small. With land, land that come before us subject. And some of them said they have three children and they want one acre lots, some of them have said they've got three daughters and they want three, one acre lots, others have said they've got four children, they want four. Two acres is quite small. I would, I would much prefer it, we, we have to limit it, that it would be four acres. Makes it reasonable for somebody.
The message we seconded mine then.
But I had trouble with the 10 acres.
So Duncan still has a 10 acre minimum with a two acre carve out. So what would happen? All right, and for you, it said you just wanted to get rid of the carve out.
And my question is, um, what the example that Ted brought up earlier on a parcel smaller than 10 acres? What, like, let's take, say, a five acre parcel, what are their options right now? So if it's, I don't know if we have any five acre parcels in the area in which we're talking about requiring conservation P U Ds. So maybe it's null.
Well, let's assume that by Murphy's Law, the first application that we get in, the day after you adopt this, will be for a five acre lot.
Okay, so what would happen with a five acre lot? Are they?
So they would be, as drafted, required to be a conservation P U D, meaning that 3.5 acres of that would have to be set aside, and they could then build on the remaining 1.5 with a minimum of four units per acre per your vote that you just had.
Would they carve out?
Well, she, she asked if there was no, no, at 10 acres, there would be no carve out available to them. It's left. Pause. The motion that Duncan just made says that you only get the carve out if you have at least 10 acres. So in your example of a five acre lot, that's, there is, is no allowance for that. So what they would need to do is, if they were choosing to subdivide, then they would need to be a conservation P U D, set aside three and a half acres, and on the remaining acre and a half, they could build a minimum of four units an acre, so six units, and a maximum of six times one and a half, nine, so six to nine units.
And they have to use P U D, they can't only set five, because it's five acres.
Because it's five acres.
What if they just came in and said, I just want to develop three acres of my plot?
They would be, as drafted, required to be a conservation P U D, because you said that you have to be a P U D at four acres. And the only option that you've given in this area is a conservation P U D. So they would have to do it the way I just described it.
Okay, I guess I have a question. If somebody wanted to like conserve more, they're allowed.
Correct, so, right, right, so in my example, I was using the minimums. If you chose to set aside, instead of 70%, 90%, your bill area is only then half an acre. You would have to do four units an acre on your half an acre, which means two units.
So this is actually an important point of why I felt like the minimum was a reasonable thing, because if someone really did want to conserve an even larger amount, they're still allowed to do that, but then within the part they're building on, you're still using it officially.
And I should correct myself to say, plan to build, not build.
So.
How does this affect the underlying zone of, of 1.2 units per acre? Does that go away? When you said the minimum of four?
You're essentially bringing in the, the units from the rest of the property. And so, um, is that, is that correct? I am a little bit, I, I think we're going to have to look at the math and make sure that it all works. But if you're, you have a 10 acre parcel, you have 12 dwelling units, you have to build it on three acres. That's, there's, there's your four units per acre. So it does, it does work, um, just exactly.
But we've already voted on.
Right, right, I was just, and I was just making sure the math worked.
No, I don't. We're now on Duncan's motion.
But what does.
For 10 to. Monica's second.
I did second it, and, and so what I'd like to understand is with that 10, really, is what I'm more, I'm more interested in. Are we doing anything harmful to people that have parcels that are subject to a, if we determine it's a required conservation P U D? If that's the case, there are there parcels less than 10, greater than four, that are being left out of an opportunity for a carve out? We are, I guess I'm wondering, if we offer a carve out, do we need a minimum acreage requirement?
If I suggest that you're interested in it, maybe we vote on this, and then you could suggest a carve out for a smaller sized parcel, if you're still concerned about that, so we could like.
Well, I would wonder if I, we amend the motion. I'd like to, and then that gets all complicated again. So I would, I'd like to make a motion that we amend Duncan's, even though I seconded it, to remove the minimum acreage cap, so that homes in the four to 10 are not left out of a carve out opportunity.
Would you bring it down to a minimum of six, or do you want to go down to four? Four seems like that's half the acreage.
I know, but right now what we're doing is we're on a four acre parcel. If, if we're not allowing a, a landlord to choose between.
So can I, can I summarize what I think you're saying first? What, what I think you're saying, Monica, is any property that is more than two acres in size could carve out two acres. I mean, said, said, said differently, that's what you're.
One time.
Right.
Carve that out. Because if you do, if, if we're, if we're forcing, it would be.
Right, I'm just, before explaining it, I was just trying to say that, that's what you're saying, correct?
I think so, because the math again, is if you have the four acres that we're requiring now a conservation P U D on, if that four acres was allowed to instead be a T N D, which we're saying, maybe no, they're not allowed. But if they were able to be a T N D, this wouldn't be an issue, they could have their carve out, and then they'd still have area to, to work with. But at four acres, you're going down to your 30%, you're down to, you know, one acre of allowable. So it's the same scenario in Ted's case, because you, you mentioned your case, like you said as an example, Ted would be prevented from all having any kind of carve outs.
So the effect of what you're suggesting there is that basically any parcel that is four acres or less would not be subject to, uh, could be, could, could have a, a carve out. And anything that is more than four acres, sorry, would not be subject to P U Ds at all, because if you had four acres and you took two of them out, then you wind up with two and two. If you have more than four acres, then you can carve out two essentially. Uh, if you had six acres or more, you'd still have to be a, a P U D on the remaining four that you have left. So that's the effect.
Duncan, I thought made a motion, but Monica's seconded. Is Monica now making a, not seconding it and making a, an amendment?
She is seconding and amending.
The amendments are super complicated for.
How about this, how about we vote on Duncan? And then after we vote on Duncan's, I, I think others may have an alternate motion to present that we can then vote on.
But we still are allowed a conversation before we vote, I mean, it's mid second, yeah, because I do have.
Trying to figure out.
I, I will, I will relinquish my amendment.
Okay, so discussion.
Yes, I, I am, I need to understand, I mean, this is important, and I feel like we're, I'm worried about it being a motion and being a definitive decision and not really understanding the unintended consequences. I think there's math here, and there are a lot of smaller parcels that are going to be impacted by this, so.
I'm okay with bringing the level of the.
I'm not sure, though, I'm, I'm confused by that, because we have the whole infill P U D, and this is going with, where is this taking places, if only in the S T Q, it's like.
You think somebody's going to carve out a do an infill P U D? They're not going to do a carve out, do an infill.
So we had 10 to, 10 and four, and failed. We didn't get a second. The one on the table now is 10 and two. So let's see how that goes. And then, you know, we'll probably end up somewhere in the middle, but, you know.
But if we vote to approve the motion, then that's proof, we'll have to have some kind of amendment. I, I don't know, I think it, I'm wondering if it's premature to have this vote and instead to give.
If, if.
Okay, we can, we can.
If we vote and it's not true, then they. If we vote and it's not true, then we can move on.
Move on, but still discuss an infill, just not necessarily know the numbers yet. We're not, if we don't support.
Right, you still have to come up with what Duncan's not agreeing.
But not necessarily tonight.
Yes, I would say tonight.
Yes.
Tonight.
I'm, I'm going to portion, say, your deadline is in two weeks and we need to write it, so, tonight.
Okay.
I'm sorry, but.
Any additional, so any additional discussion?
I guess, Sharon, do you have any, do you, can you enlighten us to any unforeseen consequences of, of doing a carve out at two acres for only those parcels that are above 10 acres? Considering South Burlington and the number of parcels that may be left in time?
When I, when I have these discussions, I would want to run the numbers, so. But I will say there's also the subdivision, right, it's the definition of a line of subdivision, which is the two lots of divisions that I think, I forget, I don't have that draft with me tonight either, but I think you're allowed up to one and a half times the district.
Right, but that's only 30,000 square feet, so I, I don't want it, that's not the, it, it, it is, it is an allowance, but it's not the same thing that's being talked about, I don't think.
Because of the decision to make it into 4 and beyond, how you wanna deal with that 4 to 10? I agree, that, that is an issue that we should probably look at a little bit more closely.
Okay, so at minimum, a two acres for 10 plus is what we're really, the motion is right now. And then the next conversation would be, what do we do with the under?
Okay. Okay, any other discussion on Duncan's motion? So it's essentially, he puts in the draft that we've all seen a bunch of times.
Other than changing.
But the carve out is two acres instead of four, on a minimum of 10 acre lot.
Perfect, okay, all in favor?
That's three.
Plan B.
See, you mixed up your voting a little bit, that's okay.
Well, I'm, I'm four, quite frankly. It is complicated.
Okay. So at this point, we didn't vote for carve out of that size.
I recommend to have a carve out of four acres for any parcel that is six acres or more.
Okay, any discussion?
Okay, so.
So you would take, out of the six acre parcel, you would get four acres you could carve out.
You could.
But then what happens if you're remaining two? You're, then you don't, then you're, then you're out of having to do a conservation PUD. So basically, that's just removed any opportunity for forcing a conservation PUD. It's only down to two acres remaining.
If it's a small, if it's less than.
You know, whereas if it's six acres and two, you still have the four acres, and then you can require at least some conservation. But you do have Article 12, and nothing will be.
I, I might suggest, Michael, if you, if you were moving in that direction, that eight might make more sense than six.
Or six and two.
Because what happens is if you have six and you can carve out four of those, then the remainder is two, which essentially is also carved out there, because it wouldn't be subject to a PUD. Um, whereas if.
What could we do with that, with those two?
You, it would be treated like the four that you carved out, it would be subject to the underlying zoning, because there is no PUD available at, at two acres. So I, I might suggest sort of leaving a remainder of four, if you're gonna do something like that, or just align it blanketly without a.
I would be happy to amend to carve out of three on any parcel that's six acres.
That still does not allow for conservation PUD.
Yeah, you get a four.
There's a lot of six acre parcels, so, well.
There is a motion and a second on the six and four.
Any additional discussion on the motion?
Let's explore this a little more.
If you've got.
Have to have, in order for a conservation PUD, which is, I don't know, if you need, the threshold is four acres.
Is that correct, Sharon?
I always had five acres.
Yeah, but it's four.
Four. I learned my math from my granny. Then I'm willing to amend my motion. Four and eight.
So on a eight acre. On an eight acre parcel, you can carve out four.
With six, you get nothing. Six, and so four, five, six, seven, you would have to be a conservation PUD in, in Michael's scenario here.
I amended my motion.
You read it?
I read it, that we, we should have a carve out of, of four acres, or any parcel that's eight acres.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, on favor of Michael's motion? Uh, three? So so far.
I, I have a mo, I'd like, I have a motion.
So far, we have no carve out.
Okay, which you had actually motioned a month ago. Okay.
You know what, I will second that.
Okay.
And I'll explain why.
Um, any discussion?
I can explain why I'm seconding that, um, and contemplating supporting it. What's important to remember is that by putting in this minimum of the four, we are never forcing a landowner to develop the full minimum requirement at one time. They can choose to own a piece of property that has this minimum stipulation on it, and still build out homes that are only for people that they would gift parcels to. Um, if the purpose of the carve out is to enable a landowner to gift technically whatever, a parcel, they can still do that within their own right without having a regulated, you know, uh, LDR that creates a carve out. They have to work within the minimum of, in this case, it would be a quarter acre lot, would be the maximum lot size, technically. Kind of, maybe.
That's a different thing.
Different thing, but, but basically, I think the private landowner can work out their own scenario, because they are never, ever being forced to build the full minimum. They simply have to have a master plan that shows where it would go, and anything that is built needs to complement that master plan, so.
Yes, and, just to be clear for everybody, you're requiring it to be a conservation PUD, and so therefore they must conserve 70% of the property.
Yes.
So they could choose to just build one house instead of building the, the seven or eight, but they would be required to do the master plan and required to conserve 70% of the property.
The carve out would not, it would not need.
Right, so they don't have to build them all, but they would have to do the conservation part.
Okay, so then my question is, are we or are we not requiring conservation PUDs on this map? Well, but it, but that's my question, though, because if.
Yeah.
If a landowner doesn't have a choice, you know, then if they have a choice, then of a TND or a conservation PUD, then we certainly know need to cut out.
Okay, let's vote on.
But we don't have, but we won't have that answer yet, right? Because we haven't, have we established that we're requiring conservation PUDs? Okay, so we assume that we're requiring.
Yeah, just assume we will, I mean, the map shows just one PUD part, like, for those larger person.
One more question before we vote. As a landlord, can I just do a simple subdivision?
So, so this is what Sharon was saying. So if you, aside from everything else that we've talked about, a minor subdivision is allowed, um, which is to take a parcel that's in existence and carve out one parcel um, that is no more than one and a half times the minimum lot size. It's 12,000 square feet in this district, so you'd be able to get 18,000 square foot. Um, as, and that's one time within an X period of time, Sharon? So that would be, that's a minor subdivision, it would be one, one, so. One lot of no more than 18,000 square feet.
And that assumes that the parcel's less than four acres.
And then again, Sharon?
Well, that also assumes the parcel's less than four acres, otherwise the conservation.
Otherwise a conservation PUD. Oh, 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 okay, then forget everything I just said, I just confused the subject. Right, forget everything I just said, because I just, I just, it's a process question, I'm sorry.
Uh, yeah, I'm opposed to requiring a conservation PUD, I don't have reason, but I know that's not on this.
The vote is on eliminating carve out.
Right.
Okay, on favor of Paul's motion to eliminate carve outs?
I'm sorry, I know I can't.
Oh my gosh, okay, well, we're going in both ways, damn it.
I know.
Okay, so who's gonna, who's gonna put forward a motion that four people do agree with?
Were we revisit this, once we address the other issues, because that may bring some clarity?
What are the other issues?
I don't know, what else have we talked?
Okay, how about, okay, here's a motion. How about we have one carve out of one acre for any location where there's a required PUD?
Oh, then I actually had, I had another motion that I wasn't prepared.
One, one, one acre carve out if the conservation PUD is required.
So in effect, that would mean that you'd still have a conservation PUD on the remainder. So what you're, in effect, saying that we would write is that on a five acre parcel or more, you could remove one acre, because then what you have left is four acres that would be required to be a conservation PUD. If you had 50 acres, you can remove one, that's, am I correct?
Yes.
So.
Okay, do I have a second?
Yep.
Okay, we have a second, any discussion? Okay, on favor?
Not doing.
So I have a motion.
Then, I mean, we have a draft, and we actually just voted against what's in.
Right, so that one is not valid, so.
I, I have a motion that we create a sliding scale.
Stiffness.
Well, but, but the, the problem is, we need to be fair to people that have five acres versus 500 acres. And we're either giving a major cut out to people with smaller, or a very small cut out to people with larger. So a mathematical, that does not allow the 500 to have a cut out of 100 acres, right? So I don't, I, I can't come up with the math right now, but the motion would be to create a cut out, carve out with a minimum of a one acre carve out for five acres and above, and sliding scale at 10 acre increments of another top acre.
Can I, can I jump in and just suggest maybe a slightly just different question before you get to another motion here? Because I think you're all a little stuck. If, would that be okay, Monica? Can, can I ask maybe each person to just, in six words or less, say, A, carve out, no carve out, and B, what's the sort of, uh, uh, Michael, what's, what's the, like, you have some number that you want to allow at least X amount of a carve out? And can we just get, like, down the line in as few words as possible, what you would, what's the, like, given that, like, there's a, there's, some folks think it's too little, what's too less, what's the sort of minimum that you would accept? So Paul, I, from what I'm hearing is, you don't want a carve out. Okay, Michael?
I would be happy with Monica's proposal, which is one acre carve out, or maybe 10 acres of parcel size.
All my numbers were different.
I was gonna say that was.
I, I think there should be a carve out. I think it's gotta be of a reasonable size, so, you know, it wouldn't go any less than two acres. And I think we have to have, you know, our, so I, I would go, you know, two and six to make sure that we have four. So it'd be good with two and six or anything greater than that.
Okay, so a two acre carve out on a six acre minimum. And Jessica, what would be palatable to you?
I, I didn't find what's up Bernie's system. No, we didn't, we just.
Okay.
That would be fine, that would be acceptable to you. Two, starting at six.
Monica would be acceptable.
With no maximum, no, no, no top, uh, two, everyone can have a two acre carve out.
We have three, six, because, by the way, you don't have, that was your argument on the PUD stuff originally.
Well, I, that's, I, it was my comment, but I'm still personally opposed to requiring and not giving people a choice, and it's.
Let's just get down the line. So Monica, you're saying two acres across the board, which in effect would mean anything less than six acres does not need to be a PUD?
If they choose to have a carve out.
Well, right, because then the rest of it is also a carve out, because it's below the threshold. I just, I'm just explaining, I'm not trying to argue or debate. Ted?
A complication, my daughter did not move back.
Not after tonight's meeting.
Definitely small landowner, I would say four acres with at least one carve out.
Uh, can you, can you phrase that slightly differently as to what you mean?
Well, a, a landowner is four acres, they should be able to carve out at least one.
Acre or one?
What happens if he has twenty?
How large?
Was that twenty?
What if I, we had twenty acres?
Well, I'm saying anyone four or over can at least have one carve out.
How would, how large would your carve out be?
One acre.
We've had some, we've had some sixes and twos, you've got a four on one.
Well, so actually, I, I think I'm actually hearing something differently. So one of the things to, I think, to say is that, that anyone should be allowed to have one lot. And, and even if they have that one lot and it brings them below four remaining acres, they would still need to do the PUD with the rest of it. It doesn't get them out of doing the PUD. You should, you could have, like, a lot that.
Because it's the starting point, not the after the carve out, is that?
Yeah, because I think we've been approaching it as, oh, if you got rid of two acres, then you're below the four acre threshold for having to do the PUD.
How, how would that work on carve out?
I think it starts to get a little bit tricky, that if you had three acres left and you're trying to conserve 70% of it, you, you're starting to get to be kind of like, what are you actually conserving? So. Yeah.
The two acres and six has a lot of.
I, I'd support a two and six, I'd put a six on that.
So, so just to see, because a, a, a few people said that that might work, um, just to sort of run the math on that one. Um, if you had, uh, three acres, so, so in, under the proposal that Bernie put forward, it's six and two. If you had three acres, you're not a PUD. If you have four acres, four and a half acres, you must be a conservation PUD. If you have six acres, you can let go of two. Um, I'm wondering if there's something in the middle here where I think what you're trying to do is not trap people into being a PUD if you're, um, you know, in the sort of weird in-between size. So how would that work that didn't trap it? I guess. Um. A, a different way of phrasing the six and two would be, uh, how would, how would it, how would this work? If you had.
Oh, I know how to word it. If you're required to be a conservation PUD, you can, um, have a carve out of up to two acres. If you're required to be a conservation PUD, you can, um, have a carve out of up to two acres as long as you remain, you have, you have four acres remaining.
It's a bunch of six acres.
Right, but if you have 4.25 acres.
You could carve out the.
You could carve out the 0.25, if you have five acres, you could carve out the one acre. If you have six acres, you could carve out the two acres, you never go below that threshold of four in the remaining PUD area.
So can you state that as a motion?
So. For any parcel exceeding.
But it's gotta remain four acres.
Yeah, so for, for any parcel, four acres or greater, you can have a carve out of up to two acres.
And a minimum of four.
With the minimum of four acres remaining.
Yeah, you can't go below the four acres. If you get five acres, you get one acre.
So if you have four and a half. Up to two.
If you're four and a half, you get a half acre.
Second?
Okay, good.
Do we give the original motion?
Sue, do you need me to repeat that? Probably.
Sue, how many motions have we done?
I stop her, run out of.
You can retire.
Yeah, I hope so, I'm gonna try to not do those, like, double motions, just, I think they're really bad. So, okay, so this is a single motion, so, in a required conservation PUD, where there's greater than four acres, you can have a carve out of up to two acres removed from conservation PUD area as long as there's four acres remaining. That would, that would become a minimum of, that would become the PUD.
Then you need to start with six.
No, because it's up to.
So if you had five, you could carve out one. If you had 5.2, you could carve out 1.2, if you had six, you could carve out two. If you had eight, you could carve out two, that's what you're saying.
So I said it backwards this time, so it only implies if you have more than two. Okay, that's.
Do you have a second?
Okay, we have a second, any, any discussion? Okay, on favor?
Yeah.
Thank you, Monica, for voting for it. Okay, so, we said, I wrote down, we were gonna next talk about whether the conservation PUDs.
Okay, so in the draft, in, and, and I'm, right now, I'm talking about the Southeast quadrant, you can talk about other places in a minute. The draft says, a conservation PUD is required for any development of land that includes four or more acres of land within the NRT, NR, NRN districts. Meaning, if you had a 30 acre parcel, and 27 of them are in the NRP, you're not required to be a conservation PUD, you're already, you, you can't touch the 27 anyway. Um, so you have to have at least four acres in the NR district, in a development district, in order to be eligible for this. Does that make sense?
What about VR?
Uh, VR, the draft that you had asked us to do would be that that was gonna be a TND. That's, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, no, VR. VR is actually not in the draft, so that's up for your discussion.
And CD?
I put whatever was in the table.
Okay, so, um, I think in the map that I showed, I showed it as also the village residential, but not the village commercial, which is a very small piece around the Millmark and down.
Yes, this is actually one of the pieces I wanted to talk about, because I think when we did the, the big circles on the map, we had, at least some of us had felt like the SEQ village residential around Dorset Street could be a reasonable spot for neighborhoods. So I didn't know if that was a spot where it could be a choice still. They, you know, you could either do a conservation PUD or a TND, you know, those are relatively small lots there, and there's there's a lot of vetting over that, um, village residential at the time of the SEQ. That felt like one spot where we could maybe do a choice still, but based on our previous conversations.
So then, we could have the language as currently written, requiring a conservation PUD in the Southeast quadrant, except for the village residential.
And village.
And village commercial, that's what we're saying.
Yeah, but they could make the.
They, they have a choice between a TND and a conservation PUD, and those two.
I will move forward.
I'll second.
Okay, um, any discussion on the village residential, um, going back to being a choice of a TND or conservation PUD?
Well, wait, what's the motion, the motion's larger, it's basically requiring conservation PUD.
The motion is to keep the language as written, which is requiring a conservation PUD in the Southeast quadrant, with the exception of the village residential and village commercial.
I, we're in discussion, but I do have a question.
Can I ask that you put it in the inverse, because there's some zoning districts that aren't that, there's a municipal district and some other ones? So can I ask that you phrase it as, that it be required in the neighborhood residential, neighborhood residential transition, and neighborhood residential north? That way, we're not talking about, that's, that's what, I think what you meant to say is to words required, but there are some other sub-districts that I don't think you mean to include, like parks districts and things like that.
Okay, those that you mentioned are all in the Southeast quadrant?
Southeast quadrant, neighborhood residential, Southeast quadrant, neighborhood residential north, and Southeast quadrant, neighborhood residential transition. That's what's in the draft currently.
So, the draft as written, take out village commercial.
I thought we were gonna leave the village residential as a caution.
Right, so the motion is where it's required, right, that's your motion as to it's being required in those three.
So I have my question, and my conversation is this, do we know, do we have a sense of all of the, I'm looking at your map, Paul, of the conservation PUD candidate parcels with NRP hazards and level ones. Do we have a sense of, of those, the pink boxes? What, how many of them actually have 70% of those natural resource sources in them right now? What, how many of the parcels are at that 70%, which, uh, Sharon said earlier, is traditionally what, where conservation.
So, how many of them, does it already cover?
At 70, like, how many of these parcels are covered 70% by natural resources in this other element?
70% of the ones that you're talking about, I would say, not very many. Um, I would say probably the ones that are the Lang property up on the screen here, and the, uh, sorry, Long property in the far left, along Spear Street, is probably close to 70%. Um, possib, I, possibly the ones that are the Dewitt properties, that's sort of the bottom middle of the screen. Um, if you also said, and also in the NRP district, then what I would say is, that depends on your next conversation, which you started last week, of, are you expanding, expanding the NRP in those properties near the Great Swamp?
Let's stick with.
Right, I'm just trying to answer the question of, like.
So, my comment is, remembering that Sharon had told us earlier in the meeting, that usually, and Sharon, please correct me if I'm wrong, usually a conservation PUD is required when basically 70% of the land has the natural resources under it. So therefore, if you have a 70%, you're required to use a conservation PUD. What this draft is proposing is that even lands that are not 70% covered in these items will be required to use a conservation PUD and conserve 70%. Even if they're only 40% covered, 50% covered, that, that's what this draft is doing.
Yes, so this.
And is unique in this?
Not necessarily unique, it was based on a discussion of making sure that the hazard of level one was included, and also then including a bunch of the other resources that you.
You can get into the mic, Sharon?
Oh, sorry. It's including level one and the hazard for sure, and then other resources that you've been discussing or that were referenced either in the regulations or in the plan or in other places. Um, so, you're right, it's based on more of the ones actually that are shown on the map. But I think the point.
So, I mean, my, my comment on that is that I, I think that our Article 12 and our NRP is extremely robust, and I'm very excited and proud of all of the work that we've done with that. I think it's providing excellent and far increased and improved protection in the SEQ, and I think that those rights stand, um, very strong, um, themselves. And so personally, I have an issue with requiring and not providing a choice to a landowner. But that's my comment.
Can I ask you a question, does that stem from a concern about land that could be developed, being taken off the block?
I just feel it's undermining all the work that we've done in our Article 12 and Article, you know, I, I, I really feel strongly that we have looked very carefully at our Article 12, and we already have our very robust NRP, and I feel so good about that work, that I don't feel it's necessary. If, if everybody here was 70% covered, I'd have no issue with it. But because I'm seeing so few at that 70% or potentially even close to that, that's my concern. And these are permanent conservations, I appreciate that the conservation PUD is a permanent, never going to future planning commission, anything to change it, I appreciate how secure that conservation PUD is. And if all of these parcels were at 70%, I would in a heartbeat be supporting it. But I am troubled that, that they're not. And I like, I love the fact that any landowner can choose the conservation PUD and put the strictest conservation on whatever part of the parcel they want, above and beyond the hazards and the level ones and everything else. But I do take issue with it being the only option for a landowner right now, yeah.
Anything else?
Yeah, I'm, I'm puzzled about your, your 70%, your 70% is not, there must be 70% of hazards at level one, level two. But that's not what we. That, that's a question I have.
I think she's just saying she doesn't like it being required.
Well, we require them to do a minimum.
What, we're forcing them to do a minimum of 70% conservation permanently, uh, yeah.
Minimum of this is required, we're forcing.
As I said before, if the conservation PUD is required, then, yeah, that, that's, yes.
We would be forcing them to do both.
Uh, yeah, and I'm opposed, I mean, if we were going to have it required, I would support at a lesser than 70%, you know? That, because the 70% is what I take issue with, given what I see on the map.
Do you have a motion on the table, any other commissioner items? Okay, then, um. Andrew?
So, I, I think that, um, it's important to remember the vast number of public comments talking about the need to protect meadows, farmlands, grasslands, which sequester carbon, provide pollinators, provide floodwater protection, filter pollutants from our water, and I recall Paul saying, the way we're gonna protect those is by requiring conservation PUDs. The fact that Article 12 does not protect those resources does not mean they're not important natural resources. They are important natural resources, and when you look at the SEQ, that's what we're talking about, that's what we're talking about, requiring conservation PUDs to protect those important resources, which otherwise have no protection.
Um, okay, let's try and be brief, Hookover, Dan, and then Chris Jensen, and then, then both.
Uh, I want to echo what Andrew said, and, uh, the inconvenient truth is that most of the land that needs to be conserved from a natural resource perspective is in the Southeast quadrant. That does not mean there's not land outside the Southeast quadrant that has those resources that ought to be conserved. Uh, we have seen repeatedly that if we do not require something, which is part of planning, that you leave it up to the, usually the financial, um, benefit of the developer to do what they want. So I highly encourage you to, to do some planning, and by planning is you require things. And if you really want to conserve land, then you will require conservation easements on the land that contains the most natural resources that ought to be conserved. Thank you.
Chris?
Thank you, and I, I know it's late, so I will try to be quick here, and I'm going to speak a little bit, um, to the other perspective. Um, my concern here, um, is really with fairness. We have, um, a bunch of proposed regulation based on conditions which are not verified on the ground. Um, these, and we've talked about the error root study, um, error root, error wood, um, before. And those are, you know, those are theoretical boundaries, you guys already have the power to regulate development based on conditions on the ground. Um, and what we're talking about doing here is really, um, severely restricting the rights of landowners, I look at the map, it's very spot here, spot there. And the only real common factor is there are large parcels of land, um, and they're not developed yet. Oftentimes, they're adjacent to land that's really significantly developed, in a way that you'd preclude these people from doing. Um, I think that you have the flexibility to, to do what you need to do to protect resources. If the city and its citizens are really concerned with protecting resources, um, then they can, then they can buy the land. They can buy the land at fair market value, uh, it should not be these landowners. Um, and in a lot of cases, there are not, um, natural resources develop, um, identified on the parcels. They're just large parcels of undeveloped land. So I would just suggest to you that, that fairness to the landowners is also something that you ought to consider. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Chris. Okay, um, any other discussion up here on the motion?
I'd maybe like to respond to that, that, yeah. Brief, that we have a responsibility, a planning responsibility, uh, to protect the health, safety, and well-being of those who come after us. And keeping open space is a big part. Also, keeping open space accessible to those who are less fortunate than, than, than we are, and who who live outside South Carolina or in areas of South Carolina where there is open space. There was a study on my student, UVM, and it's clear that open space, the loss of open space is much worse for pipeline. Maybe lo, lots of access to open space. And what we're talking about here, most of these, um, open spaces that would be concerned in a conservation PUD will have some form of public access for climate.
Okay, all in favor?
Yeah, we, we need to go over the motion again.
Yeah, I mean, let's make sure we're all voting on the right.
What, what are we voting on?
The motion is, um, based on the language that is, um, already in the draft, i- is essentially to, to do the language in the draft. A conservation PUD is required for any proposed subdivision and development of land of four or ma, more, or more acres of land within the following sub-districts. SEQ NRT, SEQ NR, SEQ NRN.
The three sub-districts.
Right, not, and this is for requirement only, this does not, at this time yet in this motion, apply to optional places in other circumstances. This does not, at this time yet in this motion, apply to optional places in other circumstances.
Yes, okay.
Is what Michael said correct, that the conserved land will require public access? I don't recall having any rules.
Is there an ease in the garden? Yes.
That's not really.
It's private land.
Yeah. Good clarification, Sandy, thank you.
Just want to make sure.
At least the ones I know.
So I think it depends on how they're conserved and what those easements are. It is very, good point. Okay, all in favor of those three districts?
Did anybody second it?
Yeah, doesn't Michael second it?
Sensible law, frame's older.
Okay, all in favor?
One, two, three, four, five, six. Okay, six to one.
Okay. So, um, the next, so we had excluded the village residential from that. I had made an informal suggestion that that become a choice of TND or conservation.
Are we, I guess, as a general question, are we going to proceed through other areas? Or, I mean, where are we at in terms of? What's our next suggestion?
I would recommend that if you can, in the next little bit, sort out the southeast quadrant, and then you can return to Conservation PUDs elsewhere. I think you're sort of on a roll right now of, of what you want to sort of wrap up the SEQ. That'd be my suggestion.
So what's left of the SEQ that we have not covered?
You have not addressed, um, options and/or requirements within the SEQ Village Residential, which is the sort of, mostly the area that surrounds the Village Commercial, and then a couple little strips over on the east side.
How is it currently written with the change that we just made with respect to Village Residential and Village Commercial?
They have a choice of a TND or a Conservation PUD.
I don't believe it is currently written one way or the other. Um, so.
So whatever's, only because I don't know what's left in the, so I'll make a motion that we allow the option of activation PUDs or TNDs in the remaining areas of the southeast quadrant that haven't been covered previously.
Um, I think, just again, to be clear, because I don't want to have errors, I think what you're saying is Village Residential and Village Commercial.
Village Residential.
Because you don't want this to also work in the, in the NRP, and you don't want it to be in the municipal district, et cetera. So you, I think you mean those two districts.
I'll make the motion to allow the option of Conservation PUDs or TNDs in Village Residential and Village Commercial.
Okay, um, any discussion?
I have a question. So in those, those two areas, um, what kind of parcel sizes are we talking about, Paul? And what, this is meant to be our Village Residential, right? Um, like the village area. And if it's a Conservation PUD, how dense will that 30% be? Because that's above a.
Um, so you, as a PUD, you're sort of, you're going with the PUD language of, you, you don't, it's the 1.2 units an acre transferred over. It doesn't matter what your sub-district is, because it's, it's the base density of the zoning district.
I know, but the base density, the base density there is higher.
No, the base density is 1.2 everywhere. That's the, that's the sort of tricky thing about the southeast quadrant. The allowed density is higher through the purchase of TDRs, but everything that has been talked about with the Conservation PUD is based on the base density.
So the, the intended zoning here, can, would that be met if someone chose to do a Conservation PUD?
If you chose to go, if you go down this path of required PUDs, you are, for the most part, and again, I'm, I'm generalizing a little bit, but for the most part, you are erasing the distinctions between all of the sub-districts in the southeast quadrant as to what they can achieve when you're a PUD. It just becomes a, a Conservation PUD in the Village Residential, if you choose to do it, is the same as a Conservation PUD that is required in the neighborhood residential. The distinction that I think that Bernie is proposing is that in the Village Residential, you would have the ability to choose a, a TND. That becomes the distinction between the districts now, rather than units per acre.
Right, and so I guess my point is, and I'm, I'm not sure which way I'm going on this, but I'm just asking the questions. The, the zoning map, I believe the intention has been to, uh, and work towards having this village kind of density here. And we just need to understand that by, that we approve the landowners having the choice in this instance, we're leaving up whether there's going to be village type or not to the landowners. Because they, they all choose to go with the Conservation PUD there, PUD there. We will not have that, and I'm not saying that's bad. I'm just making sure we are all clear of that.
That's, that's correct. That's correct. If you give it as a straight choice, then you're letting individuals choose which path they want to go down.
Right.
Um, elsewhere in the city, you enabled the Conservation PUD when there's a certain amount of minimum natural resources.
Right.
Here, in Bernie's draft, everything that's in the brown and the red there is the choice to be, assuming they've got four acres of A or B.
Right.
But I would just, the corollary to that, based on the discussions tonight, if they chose a Conservation PUD on the 30%, they would still need to have the minimum density of four units per acre.
Correct.
That's right.
So it would still have a residential feel to it.
Yeah, but it wouldn't necessarily, they wouldn't be required to meet the village density that was not minimum required base density, but allowed in, in the current plan. There isn't a way to require that, and I'm not saying that that's bad. I'm just making sure we all understand that. We are releasing, unless, unless we, in this particular red and brown, say, if, if they do choose a Conservation PUD, the minimum density maybe goes up. I don't know what that looks like, but I'm just making sure we all.
Yeah, I, I, I would like to also just give the context that in, in practice, the parcels that have been built are nowhere near the, the allowed density. And so what you're talking about is really like seven or eight parcels total. Um, not to say that's not important, but I would discourage you from sort of going into too many what-if scenarios that wind up only applying to one parcel.
Okay. So Monica, just, um, declared the red, was the choice for the red area too? Or just on?
That was the motion.
The motion.
That the choice is in the brown and the red. Um, the draft had the red being only village, a TND, but your motion was to, to give the option for, for each.
So that's the motion, I think I heard it, I second it.
Yep.
Any other discussion?
One, very quickly, Paul, does the NCD, that we sure really don't know detail, is that relevant for this, and if not?
Um, I would say that there were none of the scenarios that would have the NCD in the southeast quadrant.
Okay.
This might be elsewhere in the city, but that was too intense for anything that's been contemplated.
Quick, quick question, how many parcels are in that red?
Uh, parcels, period, or parcels that would qualify?
Parcels that would qualify.
Uh, probably two that would qualify being four acres, um, and there's like five total, but of those, part of that is the entryway to, um, uh, cider mill, which isn't going to be built anymore. So it's really just.
Talking about two parts.
The, the lengthy one on the west side of the road, and the one that has the Mill Market in Delhi on the, um, east side of the road. That's, that's what you're talking about. Um, there, there's one more parcel that's kind of larger, and it has a little bit of both. And so in that case, you know, they, they could be either one.
Um, okay, so.
I think you've got a.
Oh, Paul first.
We just had Conservation PUD citywide.
Um.
We haven't talked about.
Say in the SEQ.
I'm not saying, yeah, we haven't got.
There is proposed applicability in some other districts.
Limitation.
Okay, all in favor of the motion? Right, one, two, three, four, five, six, motion practice. Okay, next thing on this list of SEQ was to confirm that for parcels that fall below the threshold of a Conservation PUD, underlying zoning and subdivision will allow 1.2 units per acre without the use of TDRs, up to the zoning maximum four or eight, with the use of TDRs, with the hazards in level one excluded from eligible land.
Is that, is that the way it's currently in?
We haven't written this section yet. This was the guidance that you gave us a week ago. So, um, just to, well, I laid it out in the memo, is the, the, the challenge that it presents in the places that you're requiring a Conservation PUD is that if you have 3.9 acres, you can do 3.9 times, um, four units an acre if you buy TDRs. If you have 4.0, you've got to conserve 70% of it, and you can, and you can only bring in a certain amount. So just understanding that you've got a little bit of a disparity there. You could choose to say no, no TDRs at all, or that you allow.
Three.
No, in italics. So would the choice would be to limit the use of TDRs on those smaller properties?
Um, right.
That would be the way to.
Well, I'm not, I'm, I'm not, I'm just pointing out that there's a disparity in there. Um, once you reach a certain size, you're saying, and again, I'm not talking about the Village Residential, Village Commercial, I'm talking about the rest of it all. You're saying that once you reach four slash six acres in this, in this carve-out that you talked about, you have to be a Conservation PUD below that. What you're saying is you can do, um, four units an acre. So when you get to this breakpoint of like 3.9 versus four, if you allow the transfer of TDRs in on the smaller properties, you could potentially do more on a 3.9 acre parcel than you could do on a 4.0 acre parcel.
Wouldn't you have TDRs in the 4.0 acre parcel as well?
So you do, but remember, you're only allowed to build on 30%. So you're capping it at six units an acre within the 30% buildable. So, you know, at some point, you'd be overloading that 30%. Am I making sense?
Yeah.
Um, because of your 4.0, you've got to conserve two and a half of that. So you're really just talking about one and a half. So I'm just pointing out that there's, there's this disparity where you're sort of encouraging and allowing infills, quote unquote, whether it's infill or not, on small properties, and then once you reach four, you've got to conserve, or six in your example, or you've got to conserve a certain amount. That's fine if you're comfortable with it. I just wanted to point out that, you know, there's this sort of weird breakpoint there.
If we drop it to show that the undesirable outcome, you just outlined, it doesn't happen.
So that, um, right, no, no, but, but as an outcome, that in no scenario can you do more with less. That's more with fewer acres than you could. Um, if that's the guidance that the commission would like to give, then we can probably figure something out.
Well, except I would ask, where are those, that smaller parcels? Because if those smaller parcels are in a place that, they're farther away from resources, does it matter, you know, like if they?
Well, they're in the orange areas on the map, which, um, if you were to go back to sort of 2005, they're the areas that were not in the NRP. Doesn't mean that there's no natural resources, but they're not the major corridors of natural resources.
Not the major, so they're the, they're not the major corridors.
But that's, you know, that's a very broad statement.
I, I guess my question would be, is there some way, somebody could rig it so that they could say, I've got 3.9 acres? If they just.
Instead of 4.0?
Yeah, yeah.
No, because then they'd have to be subdivided.
So corollary, corollary question to that is, on these smaller ones, you know, my question would be, are they, you know, kind of adjacent to existing subdivisions? If they aren't, I wouldn't necessarily be concerned with more.
Yeah, I mean, if places.
In the middle of two weeks somewhere, then I would be very concerned about.
I would say that typically, you're going to find them on places like Highland Terrace. Um, a place like Meadowwood Drive has a bunch of three acre lots with a single family home on them. I would say for the most part, um, they are parcels that have probably a house on them and were built as a, you know, medium-sized parcel at some time, and the house is probably in the middle of that four acre, three to four acres. There aren't very many vacant three acre lots in this, in the southeast quadrant. Um, you know, they were either built on with a home, or they don't exist.
So what, would, assuming we don't do it right now, but assuming we do come in with the infill PD, would they be infill PDs? They could, I mean, they could be, yes, if we said.
Yes, it, conceivably, yes. If you came in with that as, as a, as an add-on at a later time.
But they don't have to.
Right, you gave us the guidance to sort of not deal with the two to four acre parcels in PUDs for now.
Yeah, it feels like maybe this is something we could fix with the infill PUDs.
Oh, you couldn't hear me?
No, I could, but I don't think I would.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's right.
Well, I just offer that maybe this is something for, maybe have some language for next time.
Okay.
Because I can't speak forever, my brain is totally.
So I did hear from Michael, a proposal to have staff try to sort of ramp it so that you don't wind up with, if you have one-tenth of an acre difference, you get something wildly different. Is that something that you would like us to try to do across the board?
Well, I think location is important to, because if the four acre parcels are more targeted towards the primary conservation areas we're concerned about, and the lesser ones are not, that's relevant.
I guess the best that I can say, Monica, without doing a detailed analysis, is to say that the four acre parcels are going to be in development districts, not the, not the NRP. They're typically going to have a house on them, and they're typically going to be next to a road. Um, because that's just the nature of where they exist in the city. Um, I can't guarantee anything beyond that. It may or may not have sewer, it may or may not have other things.
Well, that guy sent in some suggested changes.
Oh, can you talk into the microphone?
Sorry, sent in some suggested language changes. Do you want to include those in whatever you have in the next?
Um, well, that's.
I just added, um, for arable, arable land, farmland, including primary agricultural zones and distinct farmland, open meadows and grasslands. It would be, um, the 15, 15 CO6 C1, 15 C1 required. The other thing was, um, about two acres, or more acres, and any portion of such land.
I'm not sure if I'll.
People's notes may be already in.
Well, so, so I think what Paul Engels is saying is some of it's a citywide question, some of it's a southeast quadrant question. So the second one that Paul just said is, the motion that you passed a few minutes ago was to say that a Conservation PUD is required in the district, such you said, when there's a, when there's four acres in that district. Paul is saying when there's four acres, period, which could also be the NRP. Secondly, what Paul is saying, um, and I guess this would apply probably outside of the southeast quadrant, um, currently, you, you, the draft says a Conservation PUD is an option whenever you've got at least 50% hazards and level one resources. I think Paul is proposing that it be required when it's 25% hazards, level one resources, grasslands, or, um, far, farmlines, or ags lands. So that's, is that a correct summary of what your proposal was? So I think the first one has been voted on tonight, um, unless somebody wants to make a motion to change where you set your thresholds in the southeast quadrant.
What we've already done, in terms of other areas, I recommend we save that for a future discussion.
No, I'm not suggesting that. So it in the upper, you know, exchanges that the staff will be looking at.
So I guess I would say, um, whenever you take that up, that has a substantial policy impact, so I would. Um, I am happy to help interpret it for you, but it's your call as to what to do. So what is your pleasure, Chair, in terms of what else, if anything, you accomplished tonight?
Um. I guess, you know, we kind of skipped to three in the memo, but you did touch on one, which was the neighborhood commercial district. Could we um, give just some commission feedback on what to do with that neighborhood commercial district? Staff recommends that the neighborhood commercial district not be included in this first round of PUDs. Um. And, you know, we would take that up. Along with the TDR discussion kind of following in terms of. I think it was the recommendation there. I just want to make sure that we don't have like staff working on this.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a practical matter, to be completely just frank about it, you haven't seen a draft of it. We can't turn it around in three days for you to meet your deadline, so the neighborhood commercial district. What we'd love to do, whether it's tonight or another night, is to hear whether it is a priority for you to do in the next three months. Or five months, whatever it is, or not, because then in places that you're not applying it, at least property owners would be telegraphed as to where you're going. But you don't have to do that this moment if you're not ready, because you haven't even really talked about it much, but.
Okay, so we're not asking staff to work on this in the next three weeks, that's the question.
Right, and by three weeks, you mean one week?
Okay, I think there's generally, and then the next one was just infill redevelopment PUDs, can we cover that really quick?
I think it's the same, it's the same thing. Um, you've looked at a draft, but I think, you know, we've taken your guidance that you've. Um, indicated to us that the two to four acre parcels are not the top priority. Um, what Sharon has done is. Uh, she's taken the smaller version of the TND and put it directly into the TND language. So that in those cases that you just went through, if you've got a five acre remainder in your conservation PUD, you'd be able to be a small version of an of a TND. So I think that you've. I think that that meets what you asked for without a lot of additional dialogue.
You gave us to ask to work on, which some of us did. And now we're abandoning. An infill PUDs. Well, from an affordable housing, maybe. I think they're crucial, that that's the kind of place where affordable housing can be built. And I think we should get this done in the next three or four meetings.
So I concur that it's a priority, I guess what I'm trying, I I'm trying to help. Figure out what your comfort level is in terms of by the thirtieth of September, you must vote on running a public hearing on language. Um, so. You know, we like it.
Is that, was that draw not definitive in any way?
Yeah, I thought you were just, I thought the the idea here was you were just pulling out those infill TNDs and the infill. Like the infill ones or not the ones, the.
I understood that we would leave that until after IZ.
Which I think is what we're proposing. That's what we're proposing.
Wait, what what's the that in that scenario, Michael, I'm sorry?
Completing the the work on the infill redevelopment PUD.
Right, so that that is our recommendation, that you prioritize it for immediately after.
Because you've done a lot of, at least I've done a lot of work on it. Really gets like going, we. Into something and abandon it and leave it, learn how to. Slime us, well, I don't know, I start speaking for the rest of you, but fine. When you send out a package, I work on it.
We, I know, and then we had a whole, we spent like three hours talking about it. We didn't, we. But I think staff, they haven't gotten enough.
You're getting feedback on that. In fact, I never get much feedback other than thanks. It's just something that I need to. Make a lay about.
Okay, good.
It's getting late.
Yeah, so can we, um, it sounds like the the basic question on the infill PUD stuff. Is whether to try to get it done during interim zoning or not. And the staff is recommending not, and Michael is saying if you would like it to be done. So can we, since we're meeting next week, and is that something that we can next week say included or not included?
Certainly, and if you choose to include it, then I would, we would recommend that you include it in the areas where you allow TNDs. Not in the areas that you are proposing to have NCDs because you haven't done that part of it yet, they 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 work together. So if you choose to do it, the to have it apply within the TND areas, not the areas that you haven't otherwise done.
Well, let me put the question to you just a minute. Can we have a drop, a one of this final drop next meeting, which we can knock off quickly?
Uh, yes to the first half of your sentence, second half, that's up to you guys.
Can I ask a quick question? It says that Sharon proposed to break out uh, the infill TND and put that into the regular TND language.
Right, so so, um, and and I did not make this very clear two meetings ago when you were talking about this, the infill redevelopment PUD is in fact. Two things or was two things. One was the infill version of the TND and the NCD, the small version of it. The other one was, how do you deal with these small two to four acre parcels? That would otherwise not have, it's 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 a slightly different thing. It's truly infill in that case. Is that a, can you can you describe it any better than that, Sharon, because I don't feel like I did.
Decided to, looking at the map, even reduce it further, so it's basically to allow for. Lots in some of the our residential districts or in, Paul said, one to fifty NCD and some of the mixed use districts. That allow for parking lot redevelopment, like the mall or something, or just an infill housing project within an existing neighborhood on a vacant lot.
So it's its own thing, it's not, it's not based in the TND per se, it's how do you accommodate just generally to what's around it, like.
So. So no, my point being that the TND element, infill element. Would be in the language.
That is in the, that will be in the draft language, yeah, so this is the, this is the two to four acre parcel, so there's a parcel, for example. Uh, behind Advanced Auto Parts on Shelburne Road. It's got a single family home on it on three acres. It's not big enough to even be in a small version of a TND, this would be a purely infill redevelopment. That doesn't have to meet the TND rules, it's really looking at what's around it as its primary. Um, problem statement to solve.
But that's what you're proposing, we move back.
Yeah, there's a couple of issues with that, one is, we haven't really done the analysis in terms of lot sizes and stuff, again, we've seen, I've seen parcels less than in. Two acres that could potentially qualify for an infill. The second is based on feedback, I thought, you know, it's clear that the standards. Are drafted to try to be as clear as possible, but this type of PUD especially helps with graphics. What it suggests is that there'd be graphic guidance attached to that type, more so than the others. Uh, because it's all based on context and how things fit together. And that's really hard to just describe in words. You know, it's pretty clear that there is still some concern or, I wouldn't say confusion, but some concern about the design standards or. That we need to figure out how to clarify that or. Um. But yeah, the TND stuff would carry into the.
Same thing with the NCD, even though we haven't.
Yeah.
Got that.
Okay, um, I guess I'm not completely sure, it sounds like if it's if it's drafted. And you incorporated all of our comments from last.
Just for the TND part, then, but the two to four acre.
I guess our recommendation is that the two to four acres could use a little more analysis for you, because it is such an important tool. That having some graphics, having some analysis, when you have a time to look at it, that isn't sort of under this gun of two weeks. Would probably result in a better product. We have not lost any of the feedback that you've provided to date, we're just helping to make sure that you are comfortable with what you have. Um. Voted for, and you did give us the guidance back in March that if there was something to sort of let go of, that these total four acre lots were the ones.
That that sounds very reasonable, so I think that's a good way to go. And that is what we voted on. Previously.
Okay.
Do we need to address the lakefront issue tonight, whether it's?
So let me give you the things that you have to figure out before you vote this out. Um, you have not yet tonight talked about. The zoning sort of adjacent to the Great Swamp that you talked about last week. Um, whether you want to add to the NRP in that area. You have not talked about the area that's zoned industrial open space, the IO um, Hill Farm area. You have not talked about ultimately the applicability of TNDs and conservation PUDs in the rest of the city, though you do have a draft from which to work. And then along the lakeshore area. Um, do you want to allow one or both or require those kinds of things? I think those those are the big things that were sort of in tonight's agenda that you have not gotten to. Remaining after that are mostly, um. Uh, 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 housekeeping items. Um, in terms of like, how do you make site plans work with this, what do you do with areas that are not sub to PUDs? Et cetera, there's probably one good conversation in there at in that, and I hope that the rest of it is fairly straightforward.
So I guess I'd recommend we pick up where we left off, I can get as much done as we can and, you know. We had set last time, we scheduled additional meetings towards the end to get it done, that's what we'll do.
Right, so right now you have next Thursday, the twenty third.
Yeah.
And then you've got, um, tentatively, the twenty eighth and the thirtieth.
Yeah, and let's see how we end up at the end of the twenty third, and we can decide if the. Next two are enough or not.
We still have to complete the work on the apartments to.
Yes.
Lot story map.
Uh.
We completed all the habitat blocks, but we didn't do the rest.
Not caring.
There was some, some proposals to change.
The the NRP district boundary.
NRP, things like that.
Well, that that was actually on our agenda for tonight.
Yeah, so that's correct, Michael, that's one other piece I I did not.
I have a question. Related to the whole. NRP. Be also within a habitat block or a habitat block be in RPI as well, I know there's some areas that.
Many areas are both.
Yeah.
The implication of that is that, um. If you, so so the NRP, if you have a parcel that's entirely in our NRP, does allow for very limited amounts of development. One house, three houses. Um, when you have the habitat block. Within an NRP, you must avoid that habitat block with that one or three homes. That's the implication of it, unless it's a hundred percent of your parcel. So that's that's how the two work together. Yeah, so that's how the two work together.
Thanks.
Okay, um. I'm going to say we're adjourned because it's very late and I think we're done.
And I know, Paul, you sent us a list of uh, meeting dates, but I can't.
Okay, I will follow up, um, one quick note for you, Shelburne is doing some amendments to the regulations that are natural resource based. Um, so please feel free to take a look at what they've done. I think that that's what they're saying about ours. Thank you, everyone.